Okay, so we'll call to order the December 2nd, 2025, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. This meeting's being conducted both in person and remotely. All votes will be by roll call. Gene, I see you're attending remotely. Thank you, and can you call roll, please?
Sure. Kate Kelly?
Here.
Sean Kevlin?
Here.
Peter Boynton?
Aye.
John Simons?
Here.
Eitan Goberg?
I'm here, and I am remote.
Yeah, so we should, we should mention who's remote, so it's only you, Eitan. Peter's in the room, I can't see him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That time, try to figure out how to make sure I can see.
Someday, one day.
Oh, okay, great. Give me one second, and we'll start the agenda. Okay, uh, first, Gene, any reason not to just go in order?
Nope.
Okay. So, continued public hearing, 1591 Osgood Street. Application for Site Plan Review, Corridor Development District and Inclusionary Housing Special Permits under Article 8. Supplementary Regulations, Part 3 Site Plan Review and Part 13 Inclusionary Housing Requirements. Article 16 Corridor Development District and Article 10 Administration of the North Andover Zoning Bylaw. The applicant proposes demolition of the existing structure and construction of a four-story building with a with a 15,209 square foot footprint. The first floor is supposed to be retail and self-storage. And the second to fourth floors are proposed to be 38 residential units along with parking, landscaping and associated improvements, part is located within the Corridor Development District 3 and Residential 2 zoning districts. Gene, why don't you give us a recap of where we're at, and introduction of what we expect for tonight? Gene, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Just as a reminder, the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw requires five of the residential units to be set aside as affordable units in accordance with Article 8, Part 13, our Inclusionary Housing Bylaw. The ground floor commercial space will contain a mix of uses consisting of approximately 6,600 square feet of leasable retail space to be used for retail office or other similar permitted commercial uses, and approximately 8,500 square feet of leasable storage or wholesaling space. The residential units above include a mix of one-bedroom and two-bedroom only. The project provides for 113 parking spaces for a combined proposed residential retail and storage uses. Last meeting, there was some discussion over those parking spaces and the proposed uses, and so you would ask me kind of for the worst-case scenario, what if all that retail space was dedicated to a restaurant use, which is a much more intensive parking requirement? I will note that the calculation they've used for retail, they've used as five spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area, when it very likely will only be 3.5 spaces per 1,000 feet, and so it is a conservative approach to begin with for the retail space. The worst-case scenario, if all 6,600 square feet of retail space was to be converted to restaurant use, which requires 15 spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area, or 99 spaces. So, in total, the result is an increase of 66 spaces or 179 total spaces versus the 113 being provided. So that's just some context. Again, I'll just remind you that there have been other strip mall-type environments where the planning board has either conditioned no restaurant use unless you come back to modify your special permit, or they've conditioned no more than one, or no more than 3,500 square feet, things like that, that you can take into consideration. So the applicant has requested waivers for the requirement of a certified landscape architect registered in Mass. They have provided credentials for who did do the landscaping. They've also asked for waiver from the requirement for Commonwealth review. Mass DOT will need to review this project and approve the access permit, but that is done subsequent to your review. They won't review it ahead of you. And securing local, I'm sorry, they won't do it ahead of securing local approval. And then they also asked for relief from the fiscal impact and community impact statements. Peer review comments have been received from traffic, stormwater, and civil. The applicant has provided responses to stormwater and civil, not traffic yet, and that was response, we, they responded just ahead of the Thanksgiving holiday, and so we certainly do not have turnaround comments yet, or final sign-off on those two peer reviews. Department review comments have been received from the Conservation Administrator, who has indicated that notice of intent has been filed, and she will need to confirm the wetland delineation is accurate. As I stated at the last meeting, DPW Water Sewer Manager has requested that they connect to an existing sewer stub that was put in place when the new sewer line was waived in Osgood Street. They have indicated that they will accommodate that request. And the School Department has reviewed the proposal and said they have no comment. So, yeah.
Okay, so, Gene, is there anything to go over additionally then tonight?
Last meeting, there was some comments about including a somewhat decorative fence along the front. Look for alternatives for riprap on these sides to stabilize the slope. And I think the applicants can speak to some of the revisions that have been made to the plans in response to the civil and stormwater reviews.
Okay, wonderful. So why don't we hear from the applicants?
Before we do that, Eitan, Gene, we're not able to see any projections here tonight, is that right?
We can. I gave the applicants instructions to display their own material, so all they have to do is hook their laptop up to a HDMIC cable that's on their table.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Gene, for that intro. Yeah, I would love to just quickly give an update, walk through some responses we have to specific planning board member comments, and then quickly touch on a couple items in stormwater and civil responses. Like Gene said, we have responded to-
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, sorry, I apologize. This is Eric Pooleen from Jones and Beach Engineers, representing, representing the applicant. So, we have submitted an NOI filing to CONCOM, we'll be going there next week. And we have responded to stormwater and civil comments. We have received traffic comments, but we have not, those were the last to come in, we have not submitted responses to those yet, but our, our traffic consultant, VAI, represented here this evening by Derek Roach, they're, they're working on it, and Derek's here to answer any traffic-related questions, so we could, we could start dialogue on that if needed. And I believe Derek's just gonna give a quick summary on just his status and, and update on where he's at with, with that aspect of the project. I, I just want to jump in on a couple of, of comments that, that the board had and, and offer up some, some responses to some of those questions and concerns. If I could share my screen here. Let's see. Let's see how this works. Excuse me, just a sec. Can we, can we see that? Okay. Okay, perfect. We did, we did add close proximity structures to our plan. The, the one we really wanted to mention was the, the residential residence to the rear there. And we added that, and we, we pulled distance from, from our edge of pavement to that structure. And that distance comes out to 248 feet. The, the, the primary, the, the primary, you know, that, the majority of that distance is, is heavily wooded. So we have a nice wooded buffer between ourselves and, and that residence.
I would remind you at this time of year, there is no buffer, so six months of the year, I agree with you, six months, no.
Yeah, that's, that is true. You get the foliage drop, and you get a reduction of, of how well a vegetative buffer does dubs, does function. It, it, another thing is, that's, that's relevant here too, which I think is, is helpful in this situation, is that residence sits higher than us, it, that, that slope slopes up towards that residence, so they're sitting above us. The benefit to that, if, if it was, if it was flat grade, you know, I'd have issues or concerns with, with headlight trespass. But that headlight, light throwing will be hitting that slope, because that house sits above us, which, which is another added benefit to the separation that we have. Another thing I wanted to mention that, that came up was adding some additional landscaping, which, which we've done. We've punched up the landscaping and added additional trees and increased the density of our, of our landscape trees. We had, there was a question about EV charging, and what we've done is we've located two EV charging-ready stations, two for residential and two for commercial. So what EV-ready means is we'll pull the conduit and get the, the casing boxes ready. So those EVs charging ports could be installed quickly, so all the infrastructure would be installed. And we, we would have the capacity to put in two in the front and two in the rear. There was some concern, I think from an aesthetic standpoint, of, of riprap sloping. So we've, we've pivoted from that, and we've, we've transitioned to a, we've transitioned to a jute matting, erosion control, green, steep slope material, which I think will, will look better and be a softer, softer look, but still accomplish the goals of what we need for those steep slopes. So we've eliminated those riprap fields from the design. Another, another comment that came up was the addition of a crosswalk to the rear of the site. And you can see that to the rear there, in the residential area, you'll see a crosswalk. So when trucks do loop around the building, there's, you know, there's a formal crosswalk for residents to get through that, that travelway before they get to the main entrance to the rear there for the residences, because commercial traffic will have the ability to loop through. It's, it's very unlikely for customers to do that, but for box trucks and, and any kind of loading and delivery function, they, they will have to loop through. So now there's, there's a, there's a formal crosswalk there for residences. We did respond to stormwater comments. We've done additional soil testing, mounting analysis, and additional test bits. So we have a really good handle on, from a stormwater standpoint, how the soil functions out there, how our infiltration systems are functioning. The design's working well. Pipes, I think, helps, we're done to check pipe capacity. I can confirm that we are in compliance with TSS and phosphorus removal rates from a state and local level. And all catch basins, we've, we've made some adjustments, and all of our catch basins are now offline. So there's no through flow through any of our catch basins. This is ideal, because this means no flow can go through the catch basin and, and re- and retransmit that sediment into the stormwater. So we've made that addition to the project, which adds additional sediment removal. As Gene said, we've been coordinating with the town DPW. And we, we have confirmed that there is a sewer stub on-site. And our, our proposal is to utilize that stewers, that sewer stub. We've, it's, it's the, the right size, it's a suitable depth. When they did that infrastructure project through Osgood, they, they, they did good planning and, and put those stubs in place. So now we don't have to, we don't have to cut into the road for sewer, which is great. So we've had that coordination with DPW. We have run a fire truck turning plan around the building to confirm that North Andover's largest fire truck can, can navigate around the site. We've confirmed that, and we've sent that over to the fire department. And we're just awaiting confirmation from them that, that everything looks good on their end, but we have been able to do that. We've widened, widened our, our parking aisles up to 25 feet, they were 24, so we've added a little more breathing room on those drive, parking lot aisles, and all access drives are a minimum of 20 feet per town regulation. So we have adequate width on all of our drive aisles. We do have a proposed sidewalk along Osgood. That was in coordination with, with DOT. And we've since added, since you've last seen the project, a sidewalk connection from the front face of our building to the Osgood sidewalks. Now we have good pedestrian connectivity from the building to Osgood. We have added two four-foot chain link fences at the top of both jute mat steep sloping. So one of them is, is to the north there off the corner of the building. That's the smaller one, we have a four-foot chain link fence there, just in case someone in the dark doesn't see it. And same to the one on the south easterly slope there, the larger one. In the event someone's walking through the, through the woods there in the dark and does not see that, that jute matted steep slope, there's a safety chain link fence there.
What's the distance of the run of the chain link fence?
Um, the distance is approximately, and let me just quickly pull up my CAD file. It goes the full length of the jute matted slope. So one of them is approximately 158 feet. Again, that goes the full length of that steep slope. And then the other, and then the smaller steep slope jute matted area is over here, and that four-foot chain link fence would be 87 feet. Yep. So that's just, just a general overview and, and hitting some of the main high points on those reviews and, and ma- making sure that we got responses to you folks on some of your comments and concerns from last meeting. So I can open it back up to the board for any follow-up comments or questions. And I, I, I just will remind one more time that we've, we've got Derek here from VAI. If he wants to just touch on a couple of traffic issues, comments, questions, concerns, and maybe give us a quick update on the review.
So I know you mentioned the fence. And the depth of the wooded area, but I do agree that this time of year, the deciduous trees, there's, there's really no screening there. So I heard you mention the fence, but I didn't hear what the outcome was of us asking about that.
Yeah, so we, we, we looked at the area. Once we got the location of the building, we were able to figure out that distance. We, we looked at the, the forested area that is between us and the house, and then the fact that the house is a higher grade than us. So all that fact, we did, we did add additional landscape tree density to the rear there on that, on that back line. And given all that, we, we, we felt like that was worth bringing to the board's attention that additional information to see if, if additional green screening or a fence was still, if that was something that the board was still interested in us pursuing once we got that additional information on our relative proximity to that house.
So, to that point about the residential area being above the site, we had also asked at the last meeting about what type of mechanicals are gonna be on the roof of this building, and will they be visible when you're looking down from above where the residential area is? Can you comment on that?
Uh, yeah, Mark, do you want to just quickly touch on the roof and rooftop mechanicals? Mark, you're muted.
We can't hear you, Mark. Looks like it's a microphone issue more than a mute issue. Why don't we come back to that? Once Mark has gotten vocal. Peter, any other questions?
Uh, yes. Are there any bollards located around the portion of the building where there could be, you know, either impact to pedestrians or to to entry lobby areas?
Um, the, the lobby area is off, off the driveline, and we do have a sidewalk and curbing there as a, as a protection for, for the residents entering and exiting the building, so when they step out, they're not just stepping out into the driveline, they're stepping out into, onto a sidewalk that's curved to provide that area, that safety area, so they can step out, assess what's going on, and then when they're ready, navigate to their vehicle. So, yeah.
And I'm, I'm just looking at the drawing here. I'm looking at the drawing with the parking spaces. Can you navigate me to where the lobby entrance is?
Yeah, so if you look at the, if you look at where the, the four handicap spaces are on that inside elbow of the building.
Yes, I see.
Yep, you'll, on that outside corner of the building, you'll see a double door right where that 18-foot measurement is on that parking lot, that Harton's stall.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah, so that's their main entrance.
So there are vehicles pulling straight in right where those lobby doors are. You know, I'm just thinking that there's lots of examples where people are doing that, and
Yeah.
they miss the pedals or whatever, and it causes a problem, and
Yeah, I think that's-
are there any plans for having that? And also, what is the reveal of your curb?
It's a six-inch curb reveal. And I think, I think what we can do i- if, I think this might be a good solution, we could do a pair of bollards, one flanking left and flanking right of the door. You know, in the event someone's foot slips and hits the gas and jumps that sidewalk at the location of the door, there's, there's, there's a bollard there. We could, we could look into that for sure.
I mean, I, I think that'd be great if you could do that. And then for the rest of the curbing around the building that you mentioned, is that all six-inch reveal?
Uh, yeah, our standard, our standard curb reveal is, it would be six inches.
Okay. Is that something we should note on the conditions, Eitan or Gene? The six-inch reveal?
I don't, I don't recall that that's something that we usually that we usually do. Is there a particular reason to do it in this case?
I think it should be on the plan set, so they can add a note to the plan set that all curbs will be six, six-inch reveal.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, we could certainly add that as a note on the plan. That is our, that is our standard, and our details spec that out. But we can add a note to the plan, just making that, that declarative statement of six-inch curb reveal.
And when you consider that bollard we discussed, perhaps we could add the result of that, but I, I take it you'll get back to us on that?
Yeah, we, we can take a look at that door location and, and see what we can do for pedestrian safety at that location. I think we could possibly add a, a pair of bollards that, if properly placed, won't obstruct pedestrian movement, but in, in, you know, that emergency situation where a, a car accidentally jumps the curb will at least be a stopping, a stopping feature for the vehicle.
That'd be terrific. And then, um, once we get the mic straightened out, we can hear about what's up on the roof and the visibility to the residential area up above. We'll, we'll put that in a placeholder.
Well, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I ended up calling in on my phone to get the audio working there. Not sure why the computer was not cooperating. So, when I drove by the site after the last meeting too, the, the tree cover, there, there's quite a bit of evergreen trees back there. It's not all deciduous. So I, I would, one, like to review that closer with the board, but I'd argue that the, the view angle of 250 feet away is very minimal through the, what I saw was a lot, quite a bit of evergreen as well as deciduous. We, we certainly can screen. We have a parapet on the building. We could, we could either raise the parapet height and/or provide some screening that's set in from the parapet to further view it, but, but I sincerely question whether that, the roof would be visible, even though that, that house is at a taller elevation. So I, I do think it warrants further review, which we can do, and if necessary, do like some sort of drone study, but I, I doubt you'll be able to see the rooftop, but there's always a screening option available. And, and we could, we could raise the parapet height as well. There would be AC condensers on the roof. We also did update the elevation based on board's comments. And they're part of the new plan set in front of you, or I mean, that was submitted. Eric, can you bring that up, or do you need me to?
Yeah, I can try to, um, let me try to pull those up.
Um, and I might be able to if you have an issue. I didn't know if they were part of the plan set you just had up. We took, you know, we had a, a good discussion at the last meeting regarding, some of the comments have felt the exterior colors were, were a little dark, and, you know, could we consider lightening it up, and, and we ended up changing the color scheme in response. So I thought it, it came across well. We, we were a little more drawing from some other local examples.
Uh, hold on, sorry, I'm struggling with the sharing. Mark, I don't know if you've got a copy you could pull up on your end?
Yeah, let me see. Ask to share window, allow to share, let's see.
So I'm seeing the white separated by areas of gray, and along the ground level, kind of a, a brownish color, is that correct?
Correct. Tell me when you, let's see, okay. Let me pull this aside. Yes, here's the regular building elevations, you know, kind of showing some parapet heights in there. Those again could be increased, but this was the revised elevation. Kind of, I'll zoom in on
Um, we're not seeing anything on your screen.
Oh, you're not. Thought I was sharing the window. Huh.
That's a better picture.
That's weird. Let's see. That's strange. I'm gonna stop that. Try again. It's, I'm just hitting the share a screen button. Allow to share window. And then it says, share this window.
Here we go, I think I, I think I got it.
Thank you.
You beat.
It looks black and white, am I wrong?
Is this, is this twenty-five, one-one-two-five rev plan set? In our meeting packet?
Um, yeah, it should, they should be the elevations at the end of the, the plan set uh, revision um, eleven, twenty-five, twenty-five.
Okay, I'm look, I'm looking at page twenty-one of twenty-one.
Yeah, that would be the
Yes.
Color genders.
Yeah, those are the correct plans. Yeah, I don't know why these are not showing up in color, cause um, they are on my screen, but yeah, the, the last sheet of the plan set, you'll be able to get a look. Okay.
Okay, um, Mark, anything else you want to add?
No, I think that's it. Again, um, you know, we'd be happy to kind of talk about uh, whether those AC condensers would be visible from the rear property. And you know, open any comments that you have uh, regarding the revised elevations.
Okay, thank you, yeah. What thoughts on that? Why don't we keep going around? Uh, Peter, I'm, I'm just gonna go around. Peter, is there any additional you have based on um, Mark's comments? Or we can come back to you at the end if you want.
I'm, I'm reading this correctly, that the roof is a hundred and three and a half feet up, is that right?
In, in tur, the, the height of the building are you referring to?
Yeah. Uh, on, on the drawing.
I, I mean, it's, it's, it's a little over, it's thirty some feet tall is the building.
I'm not sure why I'm
Under forty-five, I mean, maybe a datum point to
It's on page It's on uh, page nineteen of the plan set.
Let me go to that. Your ground level, your ground level is at sixty, sixty point six, so subtract those two.
I see, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, base elevation sixty point six. Um, so the front, the front of the building will have the appearance of a four-story building and then the back will have the appearance of a three-story building.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, uh, John, any comments, questions?
Yeah, they, we were talking before about the uh, the chain link fence and is, are the chain link, either side of the chain link fence is very visible? Uh, and would they be visible particularly from the highway? I'm just trying to, you know, do they nestle into the woods or do they actually, are they prominent?
No, they won't be prominent. Um, they're gonna be black chain link fence. Um, and they're kind of pushed off to the sides. Um, just where that, that steep slope jute matting is, um, just for a, just as a safety precaution. They're set back um, behind the building. So driving on Osgood, you would have no idea that they're there.
Okay, okay. And that was really the question is whether there was any, you know, visibility of like, there's a long run of the chain link fence, if it's in a prominent position, doesn't particularly look good. You know, in the context of a nice building, okay.
Yep, yep, they'll be off behind the building, off to the sides, um, not, not prominent at all.
That's all I had.
Okay, great, uh, Kate?
I have no questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, uh, Sean?
Yeah, just, just one question, are, are you planning to put drops on the roof for solar?
Oh, the, the roof would, it'd be solar ready, uh, definitely. And uh, it's a question of, of how much roof area we would, um, but we would designate a, a solar ready roof.
Okay, um, so uh, for, as for me, I, I, first of all, I think I very much appreciate the changes that were made and the thought you put into the comments that we made at the last meeting. I really liked the color kind of adjustment. I think the, the chain link fence for safety, but also the, the, the change of the rip rap. Um, I think all the changes you've made were kind of um, in line with what we said, so that's very much appreciated. I think in terms of the roof and the mechanicals on the roof and stuff like that, I think we have two options. One, we can do a view if people want to kind of go and do a site, or site visit. Um, just to kind of see what the nature of the screening is already. And/or we can also just put in a condition that says, you know, roofing units will be properly screened. And then we kind of wait and see, once it's built, what that actually looks like. And if it needs additional screening other than the trees that are kind of already there with the distance. So I, I, I'm kind of on the fence, as it were, on those. Um, do people want to do a site visit or are we comfortable just kind of making it more of a condition?
I, I'm fine with the latter, I don't think we need to do a formal site visit.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's my, my, given the distance and the height, I, I think there's probably gonna be, and my knowledge of the, of that particular area, there's gonna be a pretty good amount of screening. Um, but I, I'd still encourage people to maybe go by if they have a chance, but I think we can put a condition in that, that will capture that. Okay, um, I don't think I had anything, anything else. Um, I just, I think when we do eventually get to um, to the, a decision, Gene, I think we are gonna want uh, something limiting what, you know, the type of, of retail that there could be really. My suggestion would be based on what is currently in the plans. And then if they want to do something that's not currently planned, then we, they can come back for a modification. Uh, okay, so I think we'll then, if, uh, actually uh, uh, to members in the room, are, are there any people that would like to make public comment? If there are, um, we can invite them up, please.
We have one coming up, Aton.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, Chris Baldwino, Fifty Stanton Way, so in a butter, but just offset from the one house that's been the focus of the conversation. Uh, I do have photos with me, but I would encourage a visit. Um, the equipment that's there currently in that back lot, that is, as I understand it, the back edge of this whole property, plain view uh, uh, for everything, most of the year. So we talked about it's a mature forest, the canopy is up high. It has filled in in the ten years we've been in there, but it is still plainly visible. So my biggest concern, I heard parts of it, I just don't fully appreciate or can visualize what the natural buffer or barrier off the back would be. But I think it's important to recognize, it is not as deep as it appears in part of this um, depiction. I think it's accurate as it's represented, but when you're there, it's not a whole lot of woods that separates our property at fifty from the back edge of this development. So the natural barrier was the main concern. And the second, uh, because of the animal hospital, and I forget what's just north of them on one-twenty-five, it turned over, it was a landscaper, somebody else is in there now, all the light that leaves those properties this time of year, cause all the leaves are down. So light leaving the development of the property was the main concern. So I don't know what may have been discussed previously in terms of shielding for any light structures throughout the parking lot or the building itself. But those would be the two main concerns as in a butter. Uh, and then curious to hear what does come of the traffic studies as it relates to one-twenty-five with plenty of traffic lights already through there, I can't imagine we're gonna put one more in. Uh, but it's a pretty dangerous intersection at the bottom of Bradford Street where we are, coming down into one-twenty-five. That's already uh, a little dicey at times, so I don't know that this makes it a whole lot better, but those are uh, my concerns.
Okay, uh, thank you, sir. Uh, why don't we, so do we have a photometric plan? Is it part of the?
Yes, we do, there is a, a lighting plan. Um, we do, we do not have um, light trespass over property lines. Um, we do have a photo, photometric grid. Um, and lights are, are downcast, dark sky compliant, commercial lighting. So we are, we are checking those boxes um, from a lighting standpoint.
So to, to uh, the butter then, what I'll say is that they did provide a plan that shows what the lighting would be and that it shouldn't spill over off of the property. Uh, what we do in these situations is we will make that a condition uh, of the um, permit. Uh, if it's granted, that, that the light um, actually um, goes where they say it's going, going. And so that if you do notice it coming out, you let us know and then we can have them back in. But that will be a condition uh, if this uh, is approved. Um, and then, why don't we hear about, I know there was a mention of traffic, why don't we hear what we have so far about that?
Uh, yeah, um, Derek Roach, with the Aston Associates Traffic Consultants on the project. Um, we did do a traffic study. Um, it has been reviewed by your peer review consultant, we have those comments. We reviewed those comments, um, there's nothing in there um, that is of, you know, fatal condition or anything, it's all things we can respond to. It's mostly uh, additional information, clarification, questions. In terms of, I, I, you know, the, the, the intersection itself, the, where we're, uh, the driveway, so right now, there's three driveways technically to the site. So we're gonna be reducing that to one. Um, that's a much safer condition out there than, than is, is right now. So that's good. Um, we did reach out to DOT, that's one of the comments is, is, is our coordination with DOT. We did reach out to DOT prior to conducting the study. They didn't want to meet for scoping, they provided some additional, or some, some preliminary uh, comments. Um, they were fine with the driveway location and, and things like that. And um, had some comments on, on stormwater, which I think Eric already covered. And so there were some other comments that Eric's already covered in this, uh, uh, turn templates, EV stations, um, things like that. So we're working on it, uh, we're in progress. Um, like I said, there's nothing we don't think we can respond to and get a resolution to um, prior to the deadline for the next meeting. Uh, so we plan to submit that and get that in.
Derek, do we have a, just an estimate of uh, trip generation?
Oh yeah, absolutely, I'm sorry. Yeah, so the project's expected to have twenty-fives to forty-three uh, net new trips to the site. So those are trips. Minus the trips of the existing site, the existing site didn't have many. Give me one second, I'll get you the raw trips. Yeah, so the we're looking at um, thirty, so that's thirty-six, so, so forty-two to forty-two to sixty-one trips uh, during the peak hours. So you're looking at um, one additional trip every one to two minutes. The distribution was, was forty, sixty, forty north, sixty south. Um, so there are gonna be some left turns. Um, like I said, there, there are left turns now um, at the site. Like I said, we spoke with DOT, they're not, they weren't concerned about it to start with, so we, you know, we think it's fine. We did look at the crash history out there um, at our site. There wasn't a lot of crash history, I think there's only a few, few crashes in the, the five years we looked at there. So where's the crash stuff? Here it is, sorry. Yeah, so we looked at all three driveways as one intersection, uh, just to simplify things. We only had four crashes in that segment of roadway um, over the five years we looked at. Um, there were some comments from the peer reviewer to uh, get the additional year, twenty-twenty-two, that's been released by DOT as, as full and complete. Um, so we're gonna gather that data and look at that as well and see if there's any additional crash trends. Since the, cause I think after twenty-twenty-one was when the Amazon went in, so there might be some additional crashes that are there. But the, four crashes over five years is a very insignificant amount of crash history there. So, anyway, um, anything else? Uh, like I said, we, we did, we did do a capacity analysis. So just to touch on that, um, level of service is expected to be level of service D or better for the driveway under build conditions, which is considered acceptable level of service. Uh, with queuing showing to be uh, one vehicle or less um, during peak hours. We did look at site distance. Site distance at the driveway was shown to be acceptable uh, based on ASHTO standards. There's a little vegetation clearing that's required for that um, in the right of way to the, to the south of the site or the, yeah, the south of the site. So any other questions?
Yeah, Aton, I had a question.
Go ahead, Peter.
The question is about the difficulty of making a left-hand turn coming out. And the length of time, you may have to wait until you're able to make a left turn. And that raised the question in my mind, and I couldn't quite see enough detail on this drawing. Will the outbound portion of the driveway entrance have two lanes, one for turning left and another lane for turning right to avoid not only the backup of those waiting to go left, but also kind of ease the sort of anxiety of, you know, oh, I got a bunch of people behind me, I gotta, I gotta go.
Yeah, so at, at current state, um, that is not the design, the design does have one lane. Um, the analysis shows that that delay there is worse during the weekday evening condition. With the people waiting there, um, expected to have an average delay of uh, thirty-three um, seconds. Um, so that's not a significant delay. Like I said, it's level of service D, that's considered acceptable levels of service. And again, the queuing there is not expected to be significant, only one vehicle. So, you know, you're only expected to be behind one other vehicle potentially waiting.
I'm, I'm surprised that the wait time would, I'm just trying to imagine what it would li, be like trying to make a left-hand turn there. And I could imagine having to wait quite a bit longer than thirty-three seconds to get a, an opening for a left-hand turn. I mean, it's not only the volume of the traffic, but it's the speed of the traffic there. I mean, I, I, I know you know more about, you're the traffic engineer, I'm not, but it doesn't really make sense.
It, it seems to me that the problem really is this much broader issue of where you have a four-lane road, two lanes in each direction, and you're trying to turn into that.
Right.
Every place, that scares the devil out of me, try to go out a butcher way and take a left-hand turn there. I mean, it's, that's no fun.
Pretty sporty.
And there's not a middle lane there, is there? Like a free lane that's not that
Like on one-fourteen.
Yeah.
There's places with the middle lane.
I've seen that in some places that arguably makes it safer, although some people say no, because two people can come up, turn and left in different directions. But I, I mean, what are the, what's the best practice in the industry for taking left-hand turns on, you know, four-lane roads? I mean, what could you do to mitigate risk associated with that?
Yeah, I mean, you have to, I mean, first of all, you, you gotta find a gap that's acceptable, right? So I mean, that is part of it. Our, our analysis takes into consideration the lane configurations, the geometry, the volume, all of that. And that's what our analysis shows. You know, and if it comes down to it, again, like I said, this is an existing condition, people are taking these lefts right now. What we're doing is we're consolidating that to one driveway instead of having three driveways doing it in close proximity to each other. So it's a much safer condition that's gonna be than there is existing. And you know, if people don't feel safe taking lefts, then they'll end up taking rights out of the site and figure out a way to turn around.
So I, I take everything you're saying and, and it's helpful. You know, instead of three curb cuts is one, and, and that does make a lot of sense. But aren't there also a lot more cars in this plot than there currently is? And with a lot more cars, there's going to be, you know, to me, that's a multiplier. You know, there were, there were, there were four accidents over five years. And you know, what are there, ten times as many cars in this location now? And I'm, I'm uh, yeah, I'm just trying to work through if there's other options to mitigate the hazards of that left turn. And I'm not the traffic engineer, but I wondered if, if splitting the exit lane to a left turn and a right turn might ease the, the uh, risk of, of queuing for that left-hand turn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But one thing to think about though too is though, is that it, it can be a little One thing to think about though, too, is though, is that it, it can be a little bit harder. If you're making a left, if there's a car to the right of you to then be able to see to the right of you.
Right.
Right. Right. And, and, and what I'll, what I'll say is, you know, like I said, like I just said, the current design is that right now. Again, this is a DOT controlled location. We gotta go to DOT for an access permit. They're going to have their own comments on this. They're not going to let us build something that they're not. Comfortable with feeling that it's a safe design. Um, so in the end, you know, it's, it's, it's their decision. On what gets built there. Um, and you know, we're going to work with them. Um, and, and make sure that we got something that's safe for everyone.
One benefit is that there's the light is not. Far away. So yes, i- i- I agree with Peter. They're like on the green light, right? If you're coming down the green light on Oz, good. The cars are going down the hill and they're coming pretty fast. Um, so you'd. Be wise to kind of wait for those, but there will be, you know, when that light is red. That should be a pretty good opportunity to be able to make lefts.
Yeah, that's true. There should be some platooning from the lights on both sides.
That might depend on the sequencing of the lights on both sides. You know, just one, just one other comment. I also take your point about mass DOT and. Their purview and their responsibility and their. Decision-making authority, but I bristle a little bit. At the notion of, oh, okay, the safety is somebody else's job. I'm not going to worry about it. And so I, I, I don't, I know that. I know those were not your words, but. Just, just to say. Um, I think we still have a role to, you know, consider this. And even though it, you know, maybe mass DOT's decision. Um, I think it's, uh. Still important that we, uh, explore this, uh, at our level.
Right. No, absolutely. I think I must have misspoke. I, I wasn't saying. Uh, that, that. My point of saying it's, it's Mastot's final decision is that. We're not necessarily against the idea per se, but, but. You know, we want to explore it with Mastot first before we, we go to that is what I was trying to say. I'm, I, you know, I'm, I didn't want to.
Good.
Sorry to, sorry to sound like I was, I was dismissing you guys. That was not.
I appreciate the clarification, but also an opportunity for me to clarify from my. Angle. And certainly it makes sense to have their expertise as well as part of the multi-party discussion on this question of safety.
I, I, I mean, I, one thing that is somewhat comforting is that. I can't think of anywhere on that right side of the road on one twenty five that you're not allowed to turn left. Um, I agree that I find it to be, it can be challenging. But it doesn't seem like the crash data supports that there are a lot of accidents. It seems like it's something that. People are able to, um. Maneuver. Um, but I think we should just kind of keep looking at it. I, I don't see anything off the top of my head that I can think of that would. Be ways altered, but if. It becomes challenging or there are too many cars or there's queuing, we could always, uh, you know, there are other options like. You know, saying no left turns at certain hours that, right? If it's during peak times, then you have to turn right. That way that could. Prevent some queuing, things like that, that we could do internally within the site to, um, kind of, um. Deal with that if it came up to be an issue.
So Aton, I have just one question.
Yeah.
On traffic. It's actually more towards like pedestrian safety. So I guess. Just thinking ahead with respect to uses, I mean, is there any scenario where? We would have pedestrians crossing. One twenty five to get to the site and vice versa, right? Like in other words, it's like, I can imagine, right? I mean, Amazon's right across the street. So this would be a prime location for someone who's working at Amazon. Right? To go to work, right? Which is super convenient because then you can literally walk to work, right? Exactly. So I guess my question is, as part of the mass DOT process. Do they look at the potential of pedestrians crossing one twenty five? Right? And building off that point is, is that what's the, where's the nearest crosswalk? And. Are they actively used, I guess, right?
Yeah. So, so that is one of the comments when we reached out to them was, was, was about pedestrian connectivity. They wanted us to have a, a, a sidewalk along our driveway. So we've added that to the plan as, as Eric said. There is a crosswalk at both of the signalized intersections, north and south of the site. Um, so that is a place you could safely cross. One twenty five there. But. Yeah.
And this was brought up with the traffic pair review response as well. So they're going to be responding to our traffic pair reviewer because. In addition to potential employment at Amazon, that's where public transportation is. So as you know, we did an insubstantial change at Avalon and the bus route. That is within their parking lot. So.
I, I see the bus is much more likely than someone. Right. Even if you worked at Amazon, to be honest, I've never seen anyone cross the road there, first of all. But two, you'd have to cross, then go past the initial building, then go all the way to the back. I mean, that's still a pretty far walk. So.
You weren't there when I was doing site distances. I was crossing the road all the time.
Okay. Any other comment?
This is Kate. Um, I just have. I, and I, it, I, I know we're going to talk about traffic more, but. Uh, the traffic. Study that was done is based on old data before, um, Amazon facility got up and running. The crash data is old and we know we can update it slightly. We are, um, just tonight being presented with a new traffic monitoring study from. Amazon that has current, more current data in it. Um, and I'm sure you're aware of that. So. I- is there the possibility of incorporating? What have been substantial changes to this particular corridor? I mean, the very location across the street from where this is. Is, is that new information going to be taken into account?
Yeah. So, so there's, there's. So the, the, the crash data is, is older. Um, it's based on Mastot's data. And so they've only. Just recently pro- after the study was conducted, released twenty twenty two as a new year. The traffic counts for this study were conducted in September twenty twenty five. So they are actually, I believe, after. The, the monitoring counts that were done. So we do have the full Amazon incorporated into this traffic study.
Okay, great. All right. Any other questions or comments or public comments?
I have another question. It's not related to traffic.
Okay.
At the last meeting, um, we were talking about the elevations and the. The design of the exterior and the colors and, and you've made some adjustments which, um, appreciate those. But one of my questions, and I haven't heard it referred to here was. Wh- when you were looking at the design. Of the exterior. Did you take into account at all? The design of the. Large building directly across the street that, you know, dates from the sixties. Just, you know. I- i- is it compatible with that from an architectural perspective? And I think at the last meeting, someone said, oh, we. You know, we, we, we probably haven't looked that way driving by, but we can do that. I, I think that's, that was the comment. I mean, I'm, I'm not expecting or asking any. Sort of radical observation here. I'm just curious if you, if you were able to take a look and say, yeah, it'll work.
Yeah, um, Mark, I think he's, so the, there's a three, across the, right across the way from us, there's a three story. Kind of in front of the Amazon facility, there's a three-story office building that, that runs a decent length of Oz good. So yeah, Mark, that's a, there's a, it's a. It, it, it's like a three-story brick. Office building across the way. Um, and it's, it's got shades of tan, uh, in the brickwork. Is what he's referring to across the way.
I think that was the old Western Electric, wasn't it? Going way back here now.
Right. Yeah. It's set back a little off the street and it's a full brick building.
Set back with some lawn trees and parking. Uh, it, it's not, you know, immediately adjacent by any stretch of the mind, but. When I asked the question last meeting, I, I, unless I'm recalling incorrectly, I think someone said, yeah, we'll, we, we can take a look at that.
No, and I, I did actually the day after the last meeting. Looked, looked at it. Um, you know, it's. Um, it has some character to it. It's, it's mostly a brick building. We did, you know, it's got a kind of a classic. Dark, you know, reddish brown brick, um, that's seen throughout New England. And so the brick that we integrated into this building. Has some of that within it. And, um. You know, you would not see the two buildings. Next to each other, but you know, I agree, there's some context with it. And, um, you know, so I did, we did review it and I felt integrated some. You know, the, the previous, um, rendering had a much darker. More brown brick. Um, associated with it. And so I brought some of the red. Into this new design. With, with a nod towards that building.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you looking and, and, uh, you know, considering it from, from your design perspective. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay. Gene, anything else?
Sorry. It's really just getting through the three peer reviewers at this point. Um, and then the responses to that.
And so our next meeting is the twenty third. Is that right?
Yes. Yeah. So it's three weeks between. So I trust if, um, they can respond to traffic, they should be able to turn around all three.
Okay. So let's get, uh, we'll continue this. Hearing for December twenty third.
December twenty third? Yeah. Wow.
Yeah. All right. Uh, next up, new public hearing, two forty three Grape Pond Road. Steve Boyko, application for watershed special permit. Under section one ninety five, article four, part five and article ten, one ninety five dash chat of the North Andover zoning by law. The applicant, uh, proposes to remove an existing sports court and construct a greenhouse. Within the non-discharge buffer zone. The project is located within the R one zoning district.
Yep. So the project scope is located just outside the one hundred foot non-disturbance buffer zone. So literally. Just outside of it, it, but it is within the non-discharge buffer zone. The earthwork proposed will be contained to the area of the existing sports court. And the construction of the proposed greenhouse. So it's all within that same location. The applicants provided a revised plot plan, which shows a compliance setback. So the original plan submitted. Didn't show the setback to the property line and it is compliant, um, with the required setback. An application for a notice of intent has been filed with Concom. Because the area, the project is located within the two hundred foot riverfront area. So again, it's outside of their jurisdiction for one hundred feet. But it is within riverfront. The first stormwater peer review was received on November fourth. However, we're still waiting for a response to that peer review. Uh, no, actually that response may have been just sent right before Thanksgiving as well. I had written this report ahead of that. Um, so, so it's in the peer reviewer's hands and. We are expecting her to respond within a week or so.
Okay. Why don't we hear from the applicant or anyone on behalf of the applicant as to, uh, what's being proposed?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Mike Novak from Patriot Engineering. Actually, John McGee would like to get started. I think he needs to be allowed access. I'm not sure if he can, for some reason unmute. Is there any? We can take off of his, uh. If not, I can, but he was gonna. He had something prepared to get going.
So I don't see anybody waiting to be admitted.
He's in, he, he's in, Gene. He's just, he's just muted by the.
Yeah. My guess is he doesn't have, um, control to unmute himself.
Okay. And who is it, John?
Yeah, he's got his hand raised.
Me. Yeah.
Hi there. Alrighty. All right. Well, let me jump into it. I won't put my screen, show my face, even though I'm not as bad as it sounds not to show my face, but. Anyways, good evening, members of the board. Appreciate the time and appreciate the opportunity in particular with the weather to operate through the Zoom. My name is Mike, as mentioned, is John McGee of McGee O'Custom Homes. I've been hired by the owners, Judy and Steve Boyko, to oversee the construction of the proposed greenhouse. Just for a bit of context, the owners have made a real push to focus more and more on clean, organic living. And the proposed greenhouse would enable them to grow. All of their vegetables. In-house. They also want to do some flowers as well, but veggies are the big push. One of the owners is already a vegan. And maybe this will finally push the other owner to join him in his pursuits is the hope. So. Mike Novak, who's already been introduced from Patriot Engineering. Has been our lead who I brought in on the civil side. He'll take the lead shortly and walk everyone through the plan. We've met with Conservation, wonderful group. They've had a site visit. And we have filed an NOI and have a meeting scheduled next week. Um, all the neighbors have been notified. All my owners are. Have been there for quite some. Um, so it's a very friendly neighborhood. Um, finally, just to cover the formalities, as you know, we filed an application for a watershed. Special permit under section one nine five, article four. Part five and article ten, one nine five dash ten. Of the North Andover zoning by law. We're looking. To remove the existing sports court that's currently there and construct a greenhouse within the non-discharge buffer zone. And the project is located within the. Res one zoning district. So. Without further ado, I'll hand it over to Michael Novak to walk you through many of the details.
Well, thanks, John, uh, Mr. Chair, for just being with me a second. I'm gonna make sure I can, um, share my screen. And we're hopefully going to. Have a little more success. So everyone could. Let me know if they see the screen.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my computer is still kind of catching up, but I will. There we go. Okay. Uh, so as, as John mentioned, um, two forty three Grape Pond Road, Grape Pond shown here. Um, the lot is actually the second lot back. Um, on the common driveway of the three houses that, that come off of that, the common drive spur. Um, the lot has a unique shape, but in the house is actually located, uh. It just, it's away from Great. Uh, Grape Pond Road. Um, and as you, uh, let me see how I can move the pages forward here. I think I have to do it here. Okay. Did the page change? Yes, great. Uh, sorry. I'm a little, little rusty on the, on the Google. So, um, just bear with me. And I will zoom that in just a little bit. Hopefully that. That does it. So the, uh. Existing house shown here. And though you can see that the, the lot is, is cut off quite a bit. Um, the common drive shown on the, on the west side here. The sports court that exists now is. In this. Oops, about that. Um, is, is in this area here. And let me jump to this one, actually. It's not shown. And what we're going to do is remove that sports court. And replace it with, uh, a greenhouse and do some landscaping and some rearranging of, of pathway. And part of the, uh, proposal is we're also going to capture the roof runoff with a, with a stone trench. Um, the three quarters of the, the three sides of the, of the roof to, to catch the pitch. Um, and as Gene mentioned, we did have a peer review. Uh, I did submit the responses. And as she said, we have not heard back, but I, I feel as though I. Answered, uh, all of the questions. One of them was to provide soil testing. We did go ahead and go out there and. Soil test. You can see the riverfront area shown here is, is. One of the reasons we also have the NOI going at the, at the same time. Uh, again, so the greenhouse shown here, uh, pathway connecting it to the house. Some raised planters and a proposed tree. Um, the rest of the strip area will be replaced with lawn. Uh, some slight grading just to create a flat pad and to give the outlet, uh. The. Stone trench and, uh, an outlet overflow, um, and that is modeled as part of the. Stormwater system. And I believe I can show you. This plan, uh, to give you an idea of. This is the existing guy. So I didn't, I should have rearranged those. Uh, this is the existing sports court. Shown here. Uh, there's also gravel, uh, pretty densely packed gravel. Edge between the house and the court. Uh, so all that will be removed. Uh, we're showing erosion control around, uh, uh. We're going to come off of the driveway with a. With a construction entrance. Uh, we've provided some extra. Uh, erosion control to provide any spoils or, or, uh, stock. Uh, we've provided some extra, uh, erosion control to provide any spoils or, or stockpile location as well.
Could I pause you there?
Please.
So I'm looking at C2, which I think was the one you were just looking at with the existing sports court.
Yes.
And, um, my question is, I, I see in the first drawing, the 100 foot, uh, distance from what I think is the property line. But I also see from the first drawing that, um, there's a small stream that goes into a, like a holding pond. And that holding pond then drains underneath Great Pond and Pleasant into the drinking water supply, the lake.
Yes.
And my question is that small stream is inside the property line and looks to me like it's very close, the small stream to that existing sports court where the greenhouse will go. Am I correct that the small, and, and that small stream is, is not shown on any of the other drawings that I can see?
Yeah. Um, okay. So yeah, there's a little bit of an orientation. The, the, the cover sheet is north, plan north up. This plan sheet is plan north down, unfortunately. So to fit this, so the stream is actually to, if you look at the north arrow on C2 is actually to the west. Um, and you can see that there's a blue line here right in front of the house.
Okay, hold on. Let me, let me catch up with you. So, uh, Plan one is north up, right?
Right. So we spun this.
Plan two, I'm just looking for the, oh, um, does that mean north is down on Plan two?
Correct. Yeah.
Oh my God.
Yeah, sorry about that.
I'm sorry, but were you testing our attention to detail?
Yeah, I did want to keep you on your toes. You know, I tried.
I mean, holy cow. Uh, okay. Now let me go back to Plan one.
Okay.
So this means, does this mean that on Plan one, where the sport court, I think is not shown? But does that mean the sport, the existing sport court on Plan one is to the south or southeast of the, uh, structure?
Yeah. If you can see my cursor, the sports court sits there.
Yeah, hold on. We really can't. The graphics here are terrible.
All right. I can, I can zoom in as well. Sure. Uh, the, the sports court sits here.
Peter, can you point where he's going? Can you see it?
Uh, there we go. I can draw. How's that? So the sports court sits right here. Yeah. And the stream, the stream run, as you said. Okay. So if you hold that thought for a second and I jump to the, to this page, the existing, you can see that here's the sports court again. So the stream is over here.
It's all, it's all got to do with your north arrow and flipping diagrams.
Yep. But you can see these blue lines, these blue lines are the 100 foot and 200 foot riverfront from that estimated.
No, it's all, it's all the plan north up and north down that got me. So.
Yeah. I'll yell at my surveyor next time.
Um, I have a question. So what is the sports court currently? What is the material that's going to be removed? Uh, is there any hazardous or asbestos or anything in that? And how is it going to be removed and gotten rid of?
Uh, I think I'll let John handle that one if you don't mind.
Yeah. I mean, it's primarily a plastic type material. Um, fairly hardened plastic. So there's nothing hazardous in it, no asbestos or anything like that. So we'll put it in a dumpster and haul it away. We'll probably separate it if there's any stone underneath. And, but you know, pretty traditional means of demolition, just scrape it up and haul it away.
Um, I just have a quick question. How far is the greenhouse from the property line? In other words, what's, what's the setback of the greenhouse from the property line?
Sure. Uh, just have that land in a separate file. Bear with me one second. So the closest point is, um, 30.2 feet. So it's two tenths inside of your 30 foot setback to the rear. Um, as we look at, oh, that, there you go. You can see the 30 foot setback line here and our, and our closest distance labeled to 30.2.
And Mike, do you have a picture that Chris had put together? I think it's worth showing the, the view just so the board can see. It's a, a pretty compelling structure.
Uh, I didn't have that queued up.
No.
No, I could, yeah, if we want to, I could probably find it, but it might take me a minute. So.
Well, why don't you look for it? I'll see if we have any other questions or, John?
Are the dimensions of the greenhouse literally the same as the dimensions of the existing court? I mean, what is it? How many feet by how many feet?
No, it's slightly smaller.
Yeah.
So what are we talking? Just notionally?
And what's the height?
So the greenhouse is, uh, 24 by 36. Um, that pad, that pad I would have to jump in and, and double check how big that is. I don't have that dimensioned. Um, overall, we are reducing impervious out here. Believe I have a.
So again, uh, 24 by 36, and how does one, uh, handle drainage off of a structure like this?
So we're, we're going to, um, we're going to have a stone trench around three sides, uh, to catch all the roof runoff from the entire footprint of that building. Um, and that side, and that stone edge has been designed to accommodate, um, the, all the design storms. Again, that's what was re-submitted back to the peer review for confirmation. And then the overall site in terms of inside this work area, uh, per the riverfront area requirements, we had to do a breakdown and you can see it on the chart down on the bottom of C3, that the total proposed reduction in impervious is 550 acres. So we've, with all the removal and, and moving around of every, of all materials and then adding in the greenhouse, uh, we are, we are actually in a net reduction of impervious in that area.
And one of the members had asked height. It's hair under 16 seven. So say a little less than 17 feet in height.
And there's, um, a path that goes from the house to the greenhouse. Is that path currently there to the, um, sports court or is that new?
No, that goes right through the sports court, this path here. The sports court pretty much runs the back of this.
Okay. So that path is new?
It is. It's, it's, yeah, it's intended to just be large, laid out, um, you know, walking stone. It's not a formed, and Stephen, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is it's not a formed path, but basically walking stepping stones large enough to, to not need any, any ceiling or grouting, but.
Yeah, that's correct. There might be smaller stones or grass in between.
Okay.
More of a deconstructed path to make it re, more natural.
So does, does a greenhouse, like what types of utilities are required for this greenhouse? I guess in greenhouses in general, I haven't really thought about that much, but you, you must need electricity, water.
Yeah, that's the plan. We'll have actually some gas for some heat. We'll have electricity, obviously, and we'll have water as well.
And is that all delineated? Like where the lines go? Do they go from the house to there or how, how does that work?
Yeah, gas will come from the house meters not too far off, the electric as well. And water, no different. It's just going to have a faucet and maybe a spigot here and there. So there's plenty of pressure for that.
And you're, you said it's just over 100 feet from the wetland resource area?
The, the, uh, the 100 foot buffer line is, is that green line. Oops, sorry about that. Uh, that dashed green line. So the, the structure itself is just, just on the outside of it.
And how, how far from the lake is it?
That dimension I don't have off the top of my head. Um, I'd have to jump, I'd have to jump in and check.
I mean, the lake's right on the other side of the street, right?
Yeah, the lake is. But again, we are set well back. So I could look in with this. So you could see that we have, um, this is, this is Great Pond. I'm sorry. This is Great Pond here. Um, we're in this, we're working in this area here and the pond is on the other side of Great Pond. And we've got, we've, we've got the edge of that wetland delineated here, uh, for that pond. And the stream, you can see the stream channel for that question earlier. There's the culvert and the stream would connect through here. And then we've got another isolated wetland to this side.
Okay. Any other, um, questions or comments, board members? Does anyone have any other questions or comments?
Just for clarification, so that there's not going to be chemicals and fertilizers used in the greenhouse operation that might be discharged.
Correct. There'll be no discharge. It'll be captured in an internal drain.
And Gene, we'll have a, we'll have our normal conditions regarding the types of, uh, what can be used in.
Yep.
Yeah. We'll have a condition about that too as well. Okay.
And I'm not sure the normal condition would, would work here because the normal condition is focused on fertilizers used for a lawn, but in this case, it, it might actually have to, have to be different because this could be applied to, uh, fertilizers used in a greenhouse that could be broader range. And I think to John's point, um, because the, because the house is very close to that small, um, collection pond, which then drains into the lake. It in effect makes the house much closer to the lake because any drainage from that property does not have to seep through the ground to get to the lake. It just has to go into that adjacent stream. And that then drains via another stream into the lake. It's, it's like an expressway into the lake. So I think this is a very important question about fertilizers being used in the greenhouse.
So maybe just to follow on Peter's point, is, is there a French drain in the greenhouse?
Yeah, the fertilizers aren't going to leave the greenhouse. Um, keep in mind also, this is for consumption. So it's a different level of fertilization. And those are going to go internally into the house, no different than where a detergent would go. And then it'll discharge through the septic system and/or the, you know, the sewer, and that's how it's going to be captured. So you're not going to have any chemicals that are running out side of the property. You're going to have normal runoff, which Mike has captured through his stone trench, but no fertilization.
Got it. So, so just to be clear, so there's a French drain within the greenhouse and that drain goes to the existing infrastructure of the house. Is that correct?
That's correct. That is correct. That's how we'll, when we submit the permit, we'll have elevation inverts. We'll have all of that dialed in. So we were fully aware of that when we went through this process. We knew we didn't want anything on the outside.
Is this house on town sewer?
Uh, Mike, give the answer to that.
I, I, as far as I know, if everything has told me, yes, it is, uh, unless Stephen's going to tell me something different.
So it's on town sewer.
Yeah.
Say that again. Did you just?
It is on town sewer.
Yes.
It is on town sewer, correct.
The owner has confirmed that as well. And that, that's part of, part of all of that is the proximity to the house is to utilize the existing infrastructure without having to do too much, too much extra work.
Really nice greenhouse.
Yeah. So maybe we can add a condition that just mirrors what we were told that, uh, um, kind of work and any fertilization or chemicals used inside the greenhouse will remain, um, inside the greenhouse. Cause I don't think we can really condition things that are, what they do in there as long as it stays in there.
I think that's a good idea, Aton. And, and you know, obviously you can hear our level of concern with the proximity to the drinking water supply. So we appreciate all of your clarifications there.
Uh, yeah, one, one last, just hopefully, um, comfort piece would be also that the, I just wanted to be able to. We call out that the, the grade, the finished floor is 18 inches below the existing grade outside. So even if there was anything to be, you know, on the floor, it's actually 18 inches below any existing grades. We can't escape. Oops, sorry about that.
And I'll just add the, the restriction on fertilizer is for lawn care or garden product. So I would consider any, any fertilizer they're using is for garden product as well. So.
That's correct. And it needs to be consumable. So it's a different level.
But, but the point is you, you got all this stuff that's growing on the inside. I don't know what you use to help it grow, but when you're sort of done, that's going to dissipate into the floor, right? I mean, what, what's the floor? Is it, is it dirt?
No, it's going to be a crushed stone.
So like any water on the inside is, is not going to go back into the sewer system. It's going to dissipate on the floor, right? And.
Yeah, honestly, we've kicked around different ideas. I think as I'm thinking through this with your concerns, since we have the French drains going back into the house, we'll probably do some type of slab so that everything stays contained and there's no chance of any seepage. It's a suggestion we had thrown out early on, but your concern kind of highlights that we should do that.
Yeah, the new controlling, what comes out.
That way everything is neutralized or contained in the greenhouse.
Appreciate your, your understanding of the level of concern. And you know, to your point about everything inside is, it's for consumption. So it's a different level. I mean, I think it's a point well taken, but part of what this implies is there would be containers of fertilizer which would be used a little bit at a time on the plants, which would be consumed. And that's all great. But in the event something, you know, drops or spills, there could theoretically be a spill of a, you know, container of fertilizer that might be used in incremental amounts over the course of a year or two. But now it's, it's spilled and where does that go? And so that's part of our level of concern. So appreciate your attention to that.
Yep, no problem. I think it'll serve better and function better with a slab. So I appreciate, yeah, highlighting it. It'll help the design.
Okay. Uh, Gene, next steps?
Again, we're waiting for a response for the, from the peer reviewer for the stormwater.
Okay. So we'll wait for that and then some of these kind of updates with the kind of based, updates based on what we talked about tonight.
Yep. And, and based on those comments and updates, I, I feel pretty confident that I could prepare a decision for the 23rd. The storm review should be completed by then.
Okay. I mean, I think we all think it's a great idea. It seems like a very, um, eco-friendly and kind of, uh, forward-thinking idea. We just want to make sure that, um, as forward-thinking it is for the individuals, that it also matches that for the, you know, any risk to the community. Um, so just if you can make those kinds of changes that we talked about, then we'll try to have a decision for the 23rd.
We'll definitely do that and we appreciate your consideration.
And just, uh, for the members of the board at the, at Town Hall, is there any members of the public that wish to make a comment?
No.
Okay, great. Then we'll continue.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, well stated.
Thank you. Um, so why don't we continue this one until December 23rd?
Sounds great. And we'll be in front of Conservation next week. So hopefully the time and we can get everything wrapped up. So thank you again for your time.
Wonderful. Have a good night. Wonderful. Have a good night.
I would do as well.
We appreciate it.
Discussion item, uh, 1450 Osgood Street, uh, Jeffrey Dirk, Vanessa and Associates. Stars of the show tonight, Vanessa and Associates, uh, for condition number 50 of the approved May 20th, 2020. Site plan review special permit traffic monitoring study was required approximately one year after full occupancy of the Amazon fulfillment center.
So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, for the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessa and Associates, the transportation consultants as it relates to the. Uh, follow-on monitoring for the Amazon facility. Um, hopefully I can also, um. Add to some of the conversation that was had earlier tonight on kind of what's going on along the Osgood Street. Uh, corridor as well, because that's, um, some of the findings as it relates to the, uh, the monitoring program. So, Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I'm going to share my screen hopefully. And hopefully you can see my screen. Is that showing up for everyone? Okay, excellent. So I am going to walk through a summary of the. Uh, traffic monitoring program. And I think it's, it's important as we, um, talk about this. All right. Are you able to see me, um, did screen changing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think it's important as we get into the monitoring program, just, uh, I think for the audience members, and I think the board knows this. Um, we are acting on behalf of the town and undertaking this monitoring program. So we are not, uh, working for Amazon. So this is an independent monitoring, uh, that was done on behalf of the town by, by our firm. Um, and I think as the chair had indicated in, in the opening of the meeting. The, the, the reason for the monitoring program is really, it's a condition of the. Site plan review decision that was issued by the planning board. I know it was amended, but it's special condition 50 and. And that special condition 50 required, um, that specific monitoring elements be undertaken as it relates to really looking at. The actual conditions as they relate to the amount of traffic that's being produced by Amazon. Um, and comparing that to what, um, you'll see referred to as the control documents and the control documents. Are any of the materials that the board relied upon in issuing the site plan review decision? Uh, so in our case, in looking at the monitoring, we're looking at. Traffic volumes that were estimated to be produced by the facility at its completion. Uh, how those traffic volumes relate to the roadway network and, and those relationships are really looking at. Um, motorist delays and vehicle queuing at intersections. So they predicted a certain volume of traffic. Um, they assigned that traffic on the roadway and then they said, here's what the impacts are going to be and here's how we're going to mitigate those impacts. So we're looking at. After the facility is open, opened, how are the intersections operating and comparing that to how they were predicted to operate? Uh, the other piece of that as well as directional distribution. Um, so we're particularly looking at how, um, the. Employees are arriving, departing, but I think also importantly is how truck traffic isn't arriving and departing from the facility. So we're looking at what, what was estimated. And what is actually happening. And then a tangential review of that is also motor vehicle crash, um, data as well. So we want to also understand. Uh, has there been any changes as it relates to increases in frequency of motor vehicle crashes? At the specific intersection. So the monitoring program also looks at that. Um, each of the metrics I just described were compared, as I said, to the control documents. And we've pointed out where there's any variations as they relate to those. And then I think importantly is also understanding. To the extent that there is a variation of what does that mean, uh, in terms of impacts at specific intersections? So the study area for the monitoring program that we evaluate is basically consisted of 10, 10 intersections. Uh, so stretching from, uh, the northernmost intersection, um, at Bradford Street. Uh, all the way down to Great Pond Road, continuing on to Sutton Street and then along Sutton Street. Uh, to the Main Street, North Main Street intersection, and then along Main Street to Waverly Road. So these are the major intersections that, uh, the traffic from the project. Um, goes through, but it's also the intersections that were evaluated in those control documents. So again, the intent of really comparing what was predicted at these intersections and what is actually happening at the intersections. That's the intent of. Uh, what this, why this study area was established. The data collection effort that was undertaken as a part of the monitoring program, all of the traffic counts were done in June of this year. Uh, we did two types of data collection. So at each of these 10 intersections, we undertook what was known as. Turning movement counts, uh, where we've actually measured. The movements that are happening at each of the intersections and the time periods that we assessed in terms of the monitoring program. Uh, were during the morning time period and that time period was, uh, between six and nine in the morning. And then we also looked at in the evening and that time period was four to six in the evening. Now, the purpose of those time periods is really to bracket not only the peak hour of traffic going through those intersections for commuters or for. Uh, people that are, uh, taking children or picking them up from school, but it's also incorporates the peak hours of the operation of the fulfillment center. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that we're, we're capturing those numbers, um, as well. At each of the driveways to the property itself, so those are the intersections two, three, four and five. Uh, we've undertaken those turning movement counts, uh, at these intersections, uh, with Osgood Street. But also internal to the property. So at these entrances into the fulfillment center. Um, there's two roads, the Northern Road and the Southern Road that go back into the fulfillment center. Um, so after. The roads branched off from the, uh, commercial spaces at the front of the site. We also, uh, performed, uh, seven day traffic counts on those roadways. Uh, so that allowed us to be able to establish. Uh, both weekday and Saturday traffic volumes going into the, in and out of the fulfillment center. But the other thing it also allowed us to do is we, um, are able to quantify the amount of truck trips that are going in and out of the, of the center itself. So. Uh, those seven day traffic counts give us a much larger profile of what's happening as it relates to traffic volume at the facility. Uh, both, uh, the, uh, employees as well as the truck related traffic. And all of those traffic counts were done in June of this year. Now we're going to focus a little bit on those, uh, metrics that I had talked about. So the performance measures that we were looked at. Um, so the first thing is looking at the overall volume of traffic produced by the fulfillment center. Um, and we've measured both passenger car trips. So these would be the employees. As well as the, the truck trips going in and out of the site. I'm going to show you two tables that were prepared. Um, so the first table looks at the peak hours of the fulfillment center itself, which are different than the peak hour. Of the roadway. Uh, so the fulfillment center, uh, actually peaks a little bit earlier in the morning than the roadway peak hour. And it peaks a little, coincidental, I would say, um, with the evening commuter peak hour as well. And that really deals with. Uh, the shift type of activity that happens at the fulfillment center. So, uh, looking at the table that we have here, so column A is the measured traffic volume. So this is what we actually measured in June of. 2025. Column B is what was predicted. So these are the numbers that is the planning board evaluated the project. These are the predicted numbers that they had represented, that they expected that the fulfillment center would generate based on the estimates that they had at the time. And so we've compared both passenger car traffic as well as truck traffic with a measured versus the predicted. Um, showing what the difference is in column C and then what the percent difference is, um, to the far right-hand side in the blue column. So the first row that we have here, this is the, on a typical weekday. So as we look at those seven day counts that we performed on the driveways going into the. Fulfillment center, uh, we measured in total 5,834 vehicles, uh, going in and out. This is a two-way number. Um, they consisted of 5,271 passenger car trips and 563 truck trips. Now comparing that to the estimated volume of traffic that was in the control documents, you can see just in total. Uh, it was estimated the facility would produce about 480, uh, I'm sorry, 4,840 vehicle trips. So you can see the estimate is lower than the actual measured volumes by, uh, just under a thousand vehicle trips on a daily basis. Um, so that's about a 20.
Can I ask one question about that?
Absolutely.
Are those, where do you measure that? Is that going into, uh? Does it, I guess, does it include cars that went to Osgood Landing or just cars that went to the fulfillment center?
Just cars that went to, for the fulfillment center. So you can see on the diagram here off to the right. Um, this is where we actually took the counts going into the facility. So it's after where those cars would peel off to go into Osgood Landing. So. Uh, we were very purposeful in terms of how we collected and where we placed the counters and collect the data. So there was after those access points in Osgood, I think.
Perfect. Thank you.
So we've done the same thing for each of the peak hours of the fulfillment center. So the fulfillment center has a morning peak hour that's 6:30 to 7:30 in the morning. Uh, we measured 870 total trips. The estimate, the control documents was 1,148 vehicle trips. So what we're showing is that actually. The actual volume of traffic produced is less by about 278, uh, vehicle trips, uh, during that. Peak hour of the fulfillment center. So it's about a 24.2% decrease. The one thing I wanted to note as it relates to the peak hour of the facility in the morning is there is an increase in truck trips. So. There's less, you can look at it this way and say it's less employee related trips, but more truck trips than were estimated. So during the morning time period of the peak hour of the facility, there's 15 additional truck trips. Uh, that were not included in the projections. That's about a 75% increase over what was estimated. Not a large volume increase, however, the percent increase is, is, is larger. Uh, of course, the trucks are more noticeable just given the size of those vehicles and they obviously have. Uh, different characteristics in terms of how they impact the roadway. So.
Can I answer with a question?
Yes.
Are you going to get later on in the presentation as to which direction on 125 those trucks are? Leaving and arriving from, is it all towards, uh, Bradford or are any of those trucks heading towards, uh, town, North Andover?
So we're going to do the distribution with one of those items. So we are going to talk about that. I can just kind of give you a preview of what we're going to show on that. About 80% of the truck trips are heading to and from the north of the site.
Okay.
Um, and, and you've got about 20% going to and from the south. Uh, and, and I think what we had said is if you look at these numbers, it's about five trucks per hour that are going. To the south, I think is what we had showed during the peak time periods, but the majority of the truck traffic is going to and from the north. And that's really where they're supposed to be going. So as we kind of get to. Suggestions for reconciling some of these deviations from the control documents. You're going to see that that's one of the items that we've said that, that needs to be a focus. Not a large number of trucks, but they're not supposed to be going to the south. We really want them going to the north. So we need to implement some things to try to effectuate that change in terms of the, the pattern.
My, uh, recollection when we originally, uh, reviewed this was that. Trucks would not be going south and to have 20% of them going south is a bit of a shock.
Yes, I mean, again, it's, it's something that requires some enforcement, but also I think it's more of an educational thing that needs to happen as it relates to. Amazon, but you're 100% right.
Okay.
And following along that, that line now, when we look at the evening time period, so this is 5:30 to 6:30. So 6:30 to 7:30, that increase in truck traffic is going to be noticeable. And of course, if we have them going south, we really don't want that. And as we think about what happens at the intersections in the south. Especially at the Great Pond Road intersection, any increase in traffic is not desirable, especially as it relates to truck traffic. If we look at the evening time period, um, these increases are a little bit more pronounced. So the, the measured traffic volume between 5:30 and 6:30, which is the peak hour of the fulfillment center. We measured 1,322 vehicle trips, 55 of which are trucks. Uh, the control document estimated 1,129 total vehicle trips, 16 of which are trucks. So it's an increase of 193 additional vehicle trips, 39 of which are trucks. So that's over a 200% increase. Um, so again, 80, 80% of the north, 20% of the south, not. Supposed to have anything to the south. You know, as we're looking at that 39 additional truck trips, that's, you know, significant as it relates to. Traffic in the southbound direction for trucks that, that's not supposed to be there.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, so these are, these are pretty significant deviations, right? So I guess my, maybe just. And I, I can't equilib or calibrate in terms of like, is this, these types of deviations. Kind of no, normal kind of for the course, you make an assumption, you get a 20% swing? Or I guess in your professional opinion, this is like, just we made bad assumptions at the beginning, I guess. I'm just trying to under, just equilibrate like and.
Sounds to me like it's more of an educational problem with the facility users.
Right. That's exactly what it is. So, so just in terms of as we talk about significance of change, the, the typical. Standard metric that we use is a 10% variation. So you'll see that in our document that basically says. You're generally allowed a 10% variation from what your estimates are. As soon as you start to exceed a 10% variation, then that means, um, it's typically what we term as an un, unmitigated impact. And so an unmitigated impact is obviously something that wasn't represented in the control documents. And therefore you then look at, okay, we need to get ourselves back in line with the control documents. And so how do we go about doing that? And that's done through, as you said, education or physical improvements. So it's one of those two things. Um, but it also can be, you know, trying to look at ways of reducing the amount of traffic. But the, the, the bottom line as we look at it is. If you have more than a 10% variation from the control document, it's not something that would be considered. You know, as a part of the typical planning board process where we expect some variation, we're not going to be 100% accurate. We hope to be. Uh, however, if we have a variation that's more than 10%, then that, that's an unmitigated impact. It can show, you know, pronounced. Impacts as it relates to delays, queuing and also safety on the roadway. And so we want to look at why is that happening? And undertake corrective actions. And so that's kind of where we focused, um, as well as providing that information.
Do we, do we know, do we know if, so I mean, this is all based on, most of these are passenger cars, right? Um, those would be employees of the fulfillment center because it's not retail. It's really just employees that are working there. So do we know if the amount of employees that we were kind of expecting is the amount that we got? Um, versus are there just more people driving?
So that, that I don't know. I mean, that, that's information that could be provided by Amazon. I don't know if the town has any records of, of that type of a vision. We, we don't have it. It could be that, it could be exactly that. It could be that. As they look at the projections, that there was an assumption, you know, there's a bus stop out in front of the site, that there's going to be a certain amount of. Utilization of that, that there's going to be carpooling and some of those things just may not be coming to fruition.
Can, can, can I ask you a question? Just to make sure I interpret the numbers right. So you got the, the, the top set of numbers that shows. Aggregate over by a pretty substantial margin. Then you zone in on the peaks. Ones under, ones over, but what, on a net basis, it contributes to slight increase. So that says to me that most of the increase is coming at the off-peak hours. Is, is that a fair assumption?
Just to say, yes, that's, that's what I would say. So then we're going to look at the peak hours and, and so. I've retained the daily number here that you saw on the previous table, so we can compare what's happening during the roadway peak hours. Not the Amazon facility peak hours, uh, to those numbers. And, and you see, you see similar type of variations, but the roadway. So Osgood Street peaks from 7:30 to 8:30. And, and so during that time period, we measured 171 vehicles entering and exiting the fulfillment center. They predicted 186, so it's actually a reduction. And, and the same thing for truck trips. It, they, we measured 20, they predicted 36, so it's a reduction of 16. So it goes right to your point, which is saying, if we look at the peak hour of the facility, there's more traffic being generated between. 6:30 and 7:30 AM, which is the peak hour of the facility, than what they'd estimate as it relates to truck, truck traffic. But then when we look at the roadway peak hours, it's less. So there's a shift. The, the traffic has actually shifted earlier. For the facility.
You actually, taking out the trucks, which I think are unique. It would seem to me that the argument you're partially making there is that. Okay, we got more people coming in between 6:30 and 7:30, but that's not the peak of the road. And the good news is when the peak of the road occurs, they're less. So the overall impact on the roadway system is actually somewhat mitigated.
That's exactly right. So it's the time periods that those type of activities happen and you're, you're 100% right. Um, and so what we're showing again is, is you look at the evening peak hour as well, you see there's actually less trucks driving. Between 4:30 and 5:30, which is the peak hour of the roadway. It's five fewer trucks compared to. The 5:30 to 6:30 period, which is when the fulfillment center is peaking, and then you have an increase of 39 trucks during that, that time period. So there's a, there's an offsetting impact. And I think the point is, is that if you look. And I think the point is, is that if you look at it from the truck traffic perspective, more trucks are coming before the roadway peak hour and more trucks are coming after the roadway peak hour than were estimated. So is that a bad thing? It, it, it's not. I think more of the issue is what was, we, you know, we started with the conversation of where are these trucks coming from and going to? And the issue is that they should be going to and from the north. And we've got a, a, you know, percentage, certainly more than what was expected, coming to and from the south. And so we need to change that deviation. If you were to do that and we looked at these increases that we're talking about happening, if you push that all to the north, you're not impacting the intersections to the south, which are those of the locations where we're having congestion, Great Pond Road, Sutton Street. So we really need to start to, as you look at it, effectuate that change, which is put the trucks where they're supposed to be, which is to and from the north, not having them come to and from the south.
But also to E Tan's point that the overall number of trips from the facility is probably heavily based on the number of people that work there. And if the assumption is higher, was lower than the actual, then that's just the reality of the situation.
It, it is, but, but the other thing as we look at the projected traffic volumes is that there is, in terms of the methodology that's used, it's based on operating similar operating facilities. What you always run into with problems with that is it needs to be an operating facility in a similar setting with similar, you know, accommodations to what is being proposed. So if you pick a facility that has, you know, a robust shuttle service or a robust transit system or, you know, things like that, or there are a lot of carpool, that's going to drive these numbers as well. So, you know, as you're very well aware, you could have the same number of employees in an urban setting with all of those accommodations that will generate less traffic than in a suburban setting that doesn't have those. So it, it falls back to what was the underlying assumptions as they relate to the predicted volumes versus what's actually happening. So it's either there's more employees than were estimated or that utilization of those alternative modes is not what was actually predicted. It's not, not reaching the levels that were hoped for. So I'll move on to the, the next metrics and we can, metric, and we can circle back on any things. And, you know, this, this is probably a good follow-up to, I think, some of the conversations that you were having on the earlier project along Osgood Street. So, you know, one of the things as I talked about with these metrics is now that we've understood about how much additional traffic is being produced and what, you know, what those changes may mean. The other thing we want to look at is, you know, has there been any change as it relates to motor vehicle crash history at, at any of the intersections? So we looked at what we termed a pre-Amazon crash history period, which we used data from twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four. So it was a, you know, a little over, little over a three-year period. And then we looked at a post-Amazon time period, which we deter, we defined as a twenty twenty-four, May first, twenty twenty-four through September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. So it was the most recent data at the time we published our assessment. So that was, you know, seventeen months, a little over, you know, one, almost one and a half years. We've normalized the data so that you get really a, a number of crashes per year for each of the intersections so that we can do this comparative analysis before and after. So as you look at the, so we've got obviously the intersections across the top and focusing on this period here. So we have the pre-Amazon numbers and we have the post-Amazon numbers. And then we looked at motor vehicle crash rates. So the motor vehicle crash rate is the number of crashes that are happening per million vehicles going through the intersection. That's how we normalize that. And we also did the same calculations. We have a pre-Amazon crash rate and a post-Amazon crash rate. And we've compared those. And generally what you see is that the pre-Amazon crash rate versus the post-Amazon crash rate, as you look across the table with the exception of the Osgood Street intersection, there's generally either a reduction or comparable crashes. So we don't see any significant variations. Again, the Osgood Street, Great Pond Road intersection showed an increase in crash rate from point five six crashes per million vehicles to point eight one. We also noted a change at the Main Street Waverly Road, so there was an increase there. So as you've probably heard before, as, as you look at crash rates, we compare them to the state average. And so the state averages are shown here just below those crash rates. So we compare the calculated crash rate to the state averages and then determine if it exceeds that, whether it's a significant. So it's significant in terms of crash rates if it exceeds the state crash rate. So the only location that had a crash rate that exceeded the state average was the Great Pond Road, Osgood Street intersection. And that's where we showed that there was an increase in the number of crashes between looking at pre-Amazon was point five six, post-Amazon it's point eight one. So that's the, the change in terms of the crash rate there. So that, that's a location that had a significant change. Even though the crashes at the Waverly Road intersection went up, the crash rate was still below the state average there. What we did also note is that improvements are currently under design at the Osgood Street, Great Pond Road intersection. Those improvements do include specific features to enhance safety at the intersection. So there's capacity improvements by way of adding a second left turn lane on the Great Pond Road approach toward to Osgood Street so that it'll improve some capacity, reduce queuing. But there's also some safety enhancements specifically related to the pedestrian crossings at that intersection to make it safer for pedestrians. So that, that will result in a beneficial improvement at that location that's, that's being advanced. The other thing I wanted to mention that as it relates to the crash data is we also looked at the state's high crash location database. So as I've mentioned, the crash rates at this intersection, so this analysis purely looks at number crashes that are occurring in relation to the volume of traffic going through the intersection. The other metric is the high crash location database, which instead of looking at crashes based on volume of traffic, what it does is it looks at the severity of those crashes independent of the volume of traffic. So it looks at property damage-only crashes, personal injury, and any fatalities may happen. And it assigns a point value to each of those and then averages out and puts a weighting on that. And if it exceeds state mandated indices, it's designated as a high crash location. None of these locations are high crash locations as it relates to severity at the intersection. So we have a location that exceeds a crash rate based on volume, but none of the intersections are at a level where it's on the state's high crash location listing, which would then make it eligible for funding for safety-related improvements. So any questions on that before I move on? So the next metric is our traffic operation. So once we've understood how much traffic is being produced now, we've actually looked at motorists delays and vehicle queuing at each of the ten intersections that are within the study area. And again, what the purpose of this really is, is we're comparing what the actual operating conditions are, delays, queuing, and levels of service in June twenty twenty-five, when we had took the measurements, and comparing that to what the estimated, estimated operating conditions are. And so that would account for what the applicant at the time had estimated their impacts would be at each of the intersections. And so we're doing that comparison, actual versus predicted as it relates to traffic operations. So as we looked at the traffic operations at each of the intersections, what we found as we compared it to actual versus predicted, in general, the operating conditions are as predicted. So we didn't show any significant variations. The locations where we did have variations were left turn movements from Great Pond Road at Osgood Street. They're currently operating at a level of service of E or F. So E is a, is a movement that's at capacity and F is a movement that's over capacity. So those left turn movements, Great Pond Road to Osgood Street, Southbound are operating at or over capacity. They were predicted to operate at a level of service of D, which again, you had heard earlier this evening, that's considered the limit of acceptable traffic operations. Doesn't mean it's acceptable for everyone, but what it means is, is you get beyond the D, then the movement's at or over capacity. And therefore, it's constrained and people really notice the fact that there's, there's added traffic at our location. So again, actual is an E and F, that was predicted to be a D. So to some extent, that variation in terms of more traffic coming to and from the south is showing up as it relates to impacts at, at that intersection to some extent. So that's where we're seeing the left turn movement, which is the movement that would experience the greatest delay as a result of any increased through traffic on Osgood Street at this location. You're seeing those impacts as it relates to that. Again, may not all be associated with the fulfillment center. However, the fact that we have additional traffic going in that direction does have some influence in terms of what's going on there. The other location was left turn movements from Main Street northbound to Sutton Street. So the left turn movements coming off of Main Street northbound and turning onto Sutton Street, really heading down towards four ninety-five area there. Those left turn movements were experiencing added delay. They're currently operating in an F. They were predicted to operate in an E. So may not seem like a significant variation, but the difference between an E and an F can be significant as it relates to added delay and specifically queuing. And that was the other thing that we, we noted. So significant vehicle queuing was observed on the Sutton Street approach to Main Street and North Main Street during the weekday evening peak hour. So as you think about the fulfillment center, if we have added traffic demands and it's going through the Great Pond Road intersection and then continuing along Sutton Street, it would impact the two major intersections that we see here. Because at the intersection here with Chickering Road, there's that slip right turn movement. So it's less impactful because those vehicles, they continue along Sutton Street can, you know, go through that intersection with less delay. But they are going to impact left turns coming off of Great Pond Road and left turns coming off of Main Street to head toward the interchange area. And that seems to be where that additional demand is flowing as it relates to changes in traffic patterns along the roadway quarter, Osgood Street to Sutton Street toward four ninety-five. So the last, last thing as it relates, I'm sorry.
Can I interrupt you for a question there? So I've noticed the increased delays at the intersection of Main and Sutton. And a question we had here among board members was the increase in queuing at that location that you have documented, is that attributable to the Amazon facility or something else?
So we can't be one hundred percent certain. I would say that the Amazon facility is a contributor to that. And so that's why, again, as we look at those changes in traffic volumes, because of the fact that we're showing those increased level of activity associated with the volume of traffic, you know, related to employees, I think, and then to, to a lesser extent, you know, the trucks that are heading in that direction. But we really need to try to get those numbers back in line because they're clearly, if there's added traffic demand generated by the fulfillment center, it's impacting these intersections. It may be, you know, whether it's a, you know, a twenty percent contribution or, or something larger than that, it's still a contribution to, to an intersection with movements that are operating over capacity.
Right, so if, for example, the twenty percent of the trucks that are heading out of the Amazon facility and going south on one twenty-five instead of north, if that twenty percent of trucks are then turning right onto Sutton, I, I could see how that would really impact that Sutton Main intersection. But do we know if those twenty percent trucks, are they turning right on Sutton or are they continuing south on one twenty-five?
So we don't know for sure. And I think the other part of it for sure is that we would need to, we'd have to determine if they were actually generated by the Amazon facility versus another user in the area that's generating truck traffic. So you'd actually have to track the trucks as to their origin and destination. And that, that, that wasn't done as a part of the study. We didn't do vehicle tracking, but that could be something that's done as a follow-up to make that determination.
We could probably, or not we, but whoever tracks that could, you know, probably identify the Amazon trucks with the giant Amazon lettering.
Right, yeah, I, I certainly wouldn't be something that would be difficult to do, but that's, that's what you'd need to do. You'd need to actually just track that. But, you know, I think that, you know, to the extent that there's any level of activity or increased level of activity to the south, you know, it's going to impact those intersections clearly. And so I think that really getting to, you know, trying to get the facility in terms of volume of traffic and distribution of traffic in line with the control documents and the, and the documents that the board based their decision on really is, is the goal. It's really, we need to get the numbers and the distribution in line. And then that gets back to your point of saying, okay, if those numbers are in line, then clearly it's something else happening. So we have that ability now with the monitoring and understanding the volume and distribution to now say, okay, there's some variations. Those variations as it relates to volume and distribution are at a significant level, meaning they're above that ten percent. So now we need to effectuate changes to get those things back in line. Once those things are back in line, then those impacts as they relate to these intersections shouldn't necessarily be related to unmitigated impacts from the Amazon facility. So, so the next metric we looked at was the directional distribution. So that's kind of what we've been, you know, we, we've talked about volume of traffic. We've talked about this crash history. We've talked about traffic operations, but those were all affected as well by this directional distribution. So I think it was, was mentioned, the idea was that truck traffic was supposed to be coming to and from the north of the site. And so we've looked at just overall distribution of traffic as well as specifically as it relates to, to truck traffic. In general, we found that the variations in terms of distribution were within ten percent of the assumed pattern. However, there were a couple of things that we, you know, talked about, you know, previously here is that overall more trips were oriented to and from the south on Osgood Street versus to and from the north. So as we look at the distribution at the north driveway and the south driveway, focusing on those as they relate to the Amazon facility, the assumption was that you'd have basically forty-five percent entering and forty-five percent exiting to and from the, the south. And what was actually observed was fifty-three percent of entering trips were oriented to and from the south. And seventy percent of the exiting trips were observed to and from the south. So as we, we're talking about that Sutton Street, Main Street intersection and that the pronounced impacts were during the evening peak hour. So if we look at this distribution, it was supposed to be about forty-five percent of the overall traffic. It's actually seventy. So that's a significant deviation. When we're thinking about a facility that's generating, you know, as measured, over five thousand vehicle trips per day, a variation of seventy percent of that traffic coming to and from the south versus an estimate of forty-five percent. And that has impacts. And those impacts are what we're seeing at the Great Pond Road and at the Sutton Main intersection because of the fact that we've got that variation. And so it's, it's highly likely that that change in the pattern is having impacts at those intersections. So fifty-three percent of the trips exiting use the south driveway, I'm sorry, the south driveway here. So fifty-three percent use that driveway as measured versus forty percent predicted. So we actually have more traffic using this driveway and, and that actually makes sense because if most of your traffic is coming from the south, that's the first driveway they come to. And so they're going to use that versus going to the northern driveway. So I think that's kind of something that's not unexpected, but it's, it's a deviation from what the estimates are. Fifty percent of the left turn exiting trips use the north driveway. And again, I don't think that that really is something that it makes sense because if you're going to the north, why would you use the south driveway and then, you know, go past the other driveways to travel north? But it was fifty percent measured. It was actually supposed to be thirty-two percent of the trips would use the south driveway to travel to and from the north. So those variations really as they relate to traffic exiting the property is an internal operations issue. It's not something that necessarily affects the flow of traffic on Osgood Street. It's just a deviation as they relate to the, what the assumptions are. I would focus more on, you know, the overall distribution on Osgood Street, more so than what's happening at the driveways. The driveways to the facility do not operate with delays to the extent that it causes impacts out on Osgood Street. So I think that really the, the, the key finding is really as it relates to directional distribution on Osgood Street and that we definitely have more traffic coming to and from the south than from the north than what was estimated. And then as we talked about earlier, the majority of truck trips, about eighty percent, do come to and from the north. But that southern percentage, you know, around twenty percent is coming to and from the south, and that should be zero. So that's a variation, not a large volume in terms of the amount of trucks that are produced and what that twenty percent variation means. However, it's supposed to be zero. And one tractor trailer fully loaded is about equal to about. to about five passenger cars. So even if we have, you know, if you have 10 tractor trailers that are coming from that direction, if each tractor trailer equals about five passenger cars, that's 50 additional passenger cars as it relates to how it impacts traffic flow and impacts delays at the intersection because we all know a stopped truck at a red traffic signal takes more time to accelerate to get moving than, than a passenger car. And so that's where that equivalence of about five passenger cars to a fully loaded truck, that's where that comes from. So that's why a small number of trucks going in the wrong direction or an undesirable direction creates much more of an impact than a, a similar number of passenger cars because it's about five times the number. So after we've undertaken this analysis, we, we have some recommendations as they relate to looking at, you know, what do we do to address what we see as the operational deficiencies? And, you know, we, we spoke about that there are improvements already planned for the Great Pond to Osgood Street intersection that are going to take place. With those improvements, there will be enhancement in safety. There will also be a benefit in terms of traffic operations. But as we kind of look downstream, the Sutton Street, Main Street intersection does not have, but currently have an improvement plan for that location. That intersection, as you probably all know, it's, it's outdated probably by, by several years. That intersection requires a wholesale replacement of the traffic signal system at the intersection to make it be more responsive to traffic, but also to make it compliant with safety standards. It's currently out of date in terms of the signal equipment, but also it's not compliant with the Americans with Disability Act. So mobility related issues at that intersection that need to be addressed. So that, that's a location that I think as we think about, you know, where, where improvements should take place or funding for improvements prioritized as we think about opportunities, that will be a location that needs a wholesale upgrade of the intersection itself. Truck traffic, this is something that directly related to the facility itself, the control documents, and I think the conditions that were put in place in the project, that really needs to be a focus of, you know, the discussions with Amazon, but really about how do we effectuate the changes that were a requirement of the approval of the project and get those trucks to be coming to and from the north? And I know that they've been working on this to be able to better mitigate and manage the truck traffic, but we really need to have something in place so the drivers are well aware of the truck routes to the project site. And I think more so as well as looking at, you know, what are, you know, to the extent that there's punitive measures, whatever those may be for the drivers, that if they're found to be going in the wrong direction or not using the appropriate truck routes, what, what those punitive measures may be. So I think that's a, really a significant follow-on item that needs to be undertaken by Amazon and probably some reporting back to the board as to what measures they're going to undertake and then what the success will be after those measures are undertaken. Because again, if we can move those trucks to and from the north, we're going to have less impacts to the south. And the fact that, you know, the one truck is equal to five motor vehicles going through those intersections, that will have a significant benefit in terms of reducing impacts at each of the intersections that we talked about. So I think, you know, that needs to be a focus. It's a condition of approval, so I think that needs to be followed up on. The last set of recommendations are these transportation demand management measures. So again, going back to these overages in terms of the amount of traffic that's being produced, it's really a couple of things. It's really, it could be more employees, I think, as, as some have mentioned. It also can be the fact that there's, you know, a representation in looking at the baseline numbers that there would be some utilization, carpooling or public transportation utilization that really is not taking place. And so these are specific measures that to the extent that they're not being undertaken, should be suggested and undertaken as a part of the project to effectuate this mode shift. Getting people to carpool, making sure that they're using the bus service, you know, the bus stop right out front is an amenity. And so these are things that we're suggesting should be undertaken if they're not already to, to do that offset. So having a transportation coordinator that's an Amazon employee at the facility, that they would facilitate ride matching program for employees, but then employees are encouraged to use a non-underdependent mode, walk, bike. I know there's been discussion about, you know, the crosswalks across Osgood Street where the site is located. So we want people to walk and bike and use public transportation. So really encouraging employees to do that, making sure employees are aware of all of these amenities. So providing that welcome packet to each new employee so that they're aware of what's offered in the area. Providing onsite amenities to discourage offsite trip making, and so we've listed those. These are not, these are things that typically would be in place anyways or break room, things, place, you know, microwave refrigerator, things that you don't have to leave the facility for, for breaks, direct deposits, things like that. So just making sure that those things are in place and then secure bicycle parking. So there may be other things, but I think the intent here really is to go back to Amazon and say, you know, we have these exceedances, you know, what are we going to do to get ourselves back in line with the control documents because these exceedances are, are clearly having impacts? And so these are some things that we've suggested to try to get the numbers back in line with what the control documents have represented would be the impacts of the project. So I am going to stop sharing and turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do any board members have any comments or questions?
For all these recommendations, what's the follow-up mechanism with the town and Amazon?
I'll probably refer to Gene, but I, but what I can imagine is that now, so we have the monitoring program results. And so the monitoring program results are, are showing the fact that we have, you know, exceedances or deviations from the control documents, some of which are, would be considered significant in terms of being more than that 10% deviation. So I think it's really having, starting this conversation of saying, okay, we have, we have things that are exceeding what was represented in terms of the impacts of the project. I think importantly in looking at the truck traffic is clearly trucks are not going in the direction or not all of the trucks are going in the direction they're supposed to be. So now we need to have this dialogue about, okay, so what's the plan to get ourselves back in line or get the facility back in line with what was represented to the town and with the board based their decision on in terms of volume of traffic, but also in terms of the distribution?
So Gene, who has that conversation with the Amazon?
Well, I mean, it seems to be part of that is purview of this board because you, you approved a special permit with certain conditions. A lot of those traffic recommendations for the demand for ride sharing and bicycle secure areas and packets for new employees that detail bus routes, that was all conditioned, that was in the decision. It happened at the time of the certificate of occupancy, whether it's still happening or not, I mean, I'm not sure. But so to a degree, I think it's still purview of this board. And the community partnership agreement had established $100,000 that, that Amazon put up and the purpose of which was for mitigation based on traffic study results. So they also conditioned a traffic study and the one that was just performed kind of combined what they specified that the study should cover as well as what the planning board conditioned for criteria. And so there are some funds for mitigation based on results of the study. However, replacement of that traffic light would far exceed the, the mitigation that's established. And so.
So could we send Amazon or managers or whoever over there a letter just saying, hey, we had this traffic study done and showed that there's more trips being generated than were projected and that there are, although there's, you know, significant compliance, there's also some non-compliance with some of the rules regarding trucks. And we'd love to have you in to discuss how to, how we can better achieve, you know, traffic mitigation, you know, something to that effect and see if they'll come in and talk with us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think so.
Because maybe, yeah, maybe it's as simple as, yeah, at the beginning we were telling everybody and now we need to get back on telling, you know, having a letter to all the truck drivers to go, to go left and telling our employees about these different options. So I mean, it just might make sense to just see if we can have someone come in and just talk through those things. I mean, there seem like there's a lot of small fixes that could be done to, that could really make some good impacts.
The other thing that Amazon could provide might possibly be some explanation for why some of these things are happening too. I mean, why, why are those drivers of the trucks going south instead of north? And, and why is the volume of cars increased so much at particular times a day and that kind of thing? I mean, it would just be interesting. I, I worry a little bit about the second page of recommendations just because it appears to be throwing it onto the employees to try and mitigate car traffic. And I, I just worry that, that that could be perceived as asking Amazon to, to impose requirements on employees. And I know it's, it's framed as, as not mandatory, as, as something that employees should be encouraged for, but, and I, and I think riding a bicycle and, that's good. But anyway, non-starter, thank you, if you want to actually get to work. But yeah, so that, I would, it would be great to hear from Amazon.
Yeah. And Jeff, you don't, you can't detail that 20% whether they are the Amazon trucks or whether they're a third-party contractor that Amazon has hired, right?
That's correct. Right. You'd need to do a vehicle tracking, physically tell me from the warehouse and then, you know, seeing where they, where they go to.
But, but you can tell us that the 20% trucks going south, they're coming from the Amazon facility.
Yeah. And so, so I think, you know, when you look at the site itself, obviously the Osgood Landing piece in the front is not generating a significant amount of truck traffic. So it's reasonable to assume based on looking at the numbers that the, the heavy truck generator is going to be the Amazon facility. So even if there's a, even if there's a few trucks associated with Osgood Landing that are, that are, you know, going to and from the south, it's certainly not at the level that the Amazon facility is generating it. So as it, as a percentage basis, it's reasonable to assume that the majority of those trucks are Amazon trucks.
No, I understand, but I think Amazon even subs out to third-party carriers. And so they don't all have that Amazon solution on the side of it and they are coming from the Amazon facility. And so in that environment, I don't think Amazon has the same communication chain with those drivers, drivers as they do with their own drivers. That being said, it's, it's all part of the conversation. I agree with that.
They have, they have a contract if they're contracting with non-Amazon drivers.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think this is a hostile conversation either. I mean, I think as Jeff pointed out, things have basically worked out as predicted and there's just some small adjustments that would be helpful.
Yeah. Great. Let's do it.
And as far as the employees, I mean, they certainly can give us data as to what was predicted. If, if I remember correctly, it was 3,500 and they can tell us what the actual has been. And I don't know if that changes seasonally or not. I mean, you did it in June. I don't know when their prime day was versus the holiday season. They can talk a little bit more about the fluctuation in the employee count throughout the year.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, overall it's, it's worked out well and thank you, Jeff, for the, for the report.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You might want to consider a site visit.
Let's continue on. Forty-seven.
I'm sorry, can a member of the public in an butter just comment? Is that all right?
So this was, this was meant as a discussion item, so I'll entertain it briefly, but it's not a public hearing. So this is more of a discussion item amongst the board based on all the comments, but I'll, if you, we can do it briefly, just it's getting late.
Great. Thank you. We have people here, Chair, also who want to talk.
Well, who, who, who was just speaking?
Amazon is here.
Oh, okay. Well, was there, I'm sorry, was there in a butter person that wanted to talk?
No. Yeah, I mean, we'll do it in whatever order you, we'll do it in whatever order you prefer.
Why don't we do that?
Okay. So, all right. So briefly, I'm Ellen Keller. I represent the owners of Osgood Landing. So we are obviously a direct of butter to Amazon. We did, we brought in our third-party consultant, Rebecca Brown, who is a, a traffic engineer herself. She provided consulting services for us when the property was first proposed. So she's also reviewed the study and we have probably the front row seat for everything that's going on. We've had some unique challenges associated with the site. As someone whose office window looks out on the, on their drive every single day, we, we really do kind of know what's going on. So we've asked Rebecca to review and to comment on some of our unique challenges. A letter was delivered to the planning board. So you do have the full letter at your disposal, but I just wanted to, if you would indulge her for a few minutes to talk about some of the most critical things or to answer any questions. But I'll leave it to you, Mr. Chair, if you'd rather. I know you have the letter and I certainly hope that it will be given due consideration.
Yeah. I mean, again, our focus is on how the traffic has affected the roads, not really with the internal, if there are any internal issues between how things are running with Amazon and with Osgood Landing. So we have the letter, but I don't think it's anything we need to really further discuss.
That's unfortunate because it does directly affect how the roadways do work. If there are trucks that are queuing up onsite or offsite, if there are effectively truck stops happening illegally on, on the property, those sort of matters do affect not just our site, but all of the residential butters as well. So I, I would hope that you would give it due consideration. We're simply suggesting a few simple alterations to the shared roadway to mitigate those concerns. I also have one question perhaps that you could also add to Amazon's questions is simply, is their new fulfillment facility operating at full capacity? Because obviously these, these, if, if not, there's going to be even more traffic that we can look forward to.
Okay. Kate, you said there were some people there that had comments as well?
There, there is.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Jonathan Greeley. I lead economic development for Amazon in New England as well as a couple of other places. I'm based in Boston, have spent significant time with Gene, Andrew, a whole bunch of folks from the town. And I would say, I would start with, we are more than happy, I'm recognizing it's late, there's tough weather out there for those of us that are in the room. And so I don't think we have to spend an exhaustive amount of time on this tonight here unless you guys would like to engage in that. I do want to offer a real willingness to kind of roll up our sleeves and work with the town on any concerns regarding the operating building. The building is fully operational. The building has been fully operational for, it's been operating for about two years and it's been, I would say, fully operational for over a year. So this is what you're going to get. I, I think certainly respect Jeff and Vanessa and the work they've done. We have our traffic consultant here would happy to offer maybe one or two comments just to kind of, I think, contextualize our perspective on some of this stuff. I think one thing I would offer is that what I see in this is a lot of jobs, right? And so there is an increased amount of employment than what we projected. I think this building was originally approved in early 2020 maybe, which means I think a lot has happened since then, right? And so we're, we're really pleased and to brag about the amount of job creation, tax revenue, et cetera, that we've created for the town. We're really also pleased to engage day-to-day in a wide range of issues that come up. It's a big building, a lot of, a lot of people working there, a lot of issues to work through. And so happy to do that, happy to meet with anybody you guys want us to meet with. I do want to turn it over to Lang and I do want to introduce Vacas, who's one of the site leaders. At one point of emphasis though, on the, the, I do want, I understand the concern about the, the left turn, right turn coming to the site with trucks. We spent a lot of time on it, a lot of education, et cetera. There are a lot of third-party contractors that work for us that drive trucks. That's actually the industry in general. That's not just Amazon. Happy to kind of revisit what that looks like. I would say is that we have, we are able to track trucks that are pulling trailers that, when they're pulling trailers for us, our numbers are a little bit different. We don't have to get into that here. I think that'd be probably worth a working session with town staff to kind of talk through some of those numbers. This has been a point of emphasis repeatedly. I think we've seen pretty good, our impressions, we've been doing a decent job, but again, we're happy to take a look at it. I also would just briefly comment on our butter as many of you.
Hold on. So, sure. I, I didn't give them a lot of time.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to say, all I was going to simply say is that we've had robust dialogue with that butter on a range of topics and continue to do so and will continue to work to be good neighbors.
Right.
You know, so that's all I wanted to say.
So why don't we do this? Like, I think there are certainly more topics to discuss. The purpose of tonight's discussion item was to really get Jeff's report. So we've gotten that and I think now it's up to, some of gotten that. And I think now it's up to, some of it is out of our control, right? Like redoing the Main Street intersection is not a planning board, uh, thing that we can control. Um, but what we can have some control over are the things that are conditions in our, um, uh, site plan. So I think what we should do is, um, let us kind of meet internally. I'll talk with Gene and then maybe we can figure out, um, uh, a meeting to address some of the concerns that were brought up and suggestions made by, um, Jeff and Vanessa. And then we can incorporate, um, some of the concerns that, um, Ellen has raised in her letter and the butters have raised and see if those are things that, um, we feel we should deal with, or if those should be private issues. And then we can bring them in on, on that as well. But why don't we do that first? And then we can, um, decide if, uh, any further, you know, board hearings are required.
That's great. And one other thing, I think you mentioned, uh, coming to see the building. We're always happy to have the board in for a tour. Uh, it's pretty cool to see. We do have microwaves. Um, and we're, um, happy to have any visitors. So thank you very much for the time tonight, um, and look forward to future dialogue.
And thanks for being here.
Sure.
And, uh, working with the town. I think most of us think it's a great success. And, you know, this is just part of the plan we agreed to at the beginning. We're, we're going to check up, uh, as things go on. And if we see something, we'll work with you and you'll work with us. And, um, I expect it'll be very cooperative.
Yeah, I have no doubt that's been our consistent experience with everybody we've dealt with throughout the town. Um, you know, police, fire, planning, economic development, et cetera. It's, it's been a great experience. And so
Good, good.
For us to run a good facility takes really good people inside of the table and that the town has done that over and over again. So thank you.
Okay. All right. Very good. Um, so that would be the end of that, uh, discussion item.
Mr. Chairman, would it be possible for me to just, um, give a couple of comments directly related to the monitoring program that was, um, actually conducted?
No, no, we do, no, we're not. This is a discussion item that we put on for ourselves. And the discussion item was literally, um, the monitoring. We didn't ask for third-party review. Um, so I'm sorry, I'm not taking someone else's third-party review of our third-party review. So, no.
That's unfortunate.
Okay. It, it's, it's not required and you guys aren't even required to be able to make any comments. Um, so we've gotten it. Um, but it's, this is a discussion item, not a public hearing. Okay. Um, we're going to move on. We're going to go to 47 Bonnie Lane and 59 Bonnie Lane, tree replacement monitoring reports. Gene, can you tell us where we're at with these?
Sure. Um, this fall completed the second year of monitoring. As you may recall, we conditioned three years of monitoring and 100% survivability. Um, obviously there was pretty significant drought impact this summer for most homeowners. Um, and for the first time, we saw that some of the plantings did not survive at 47, 47 Bonnie Lane. Uh, seven trees, I, I can't say didn't survive yet, but in the spring, it looks as though they, they are not going to recover and most likely will need to be replaced. Um, that being said, it was actually the Conservation Commission that conditioned three years of survivability starting from the day of planting. So when those seven trees get replanted in the spring, that will start a new track, a new clock on those seven trees. And there's one year remaining on the others. Um, 59 Bonnie Lane had more success, so they didn't lose any trees. They, it looks like they probably lost one shrub that again will be replaced in the spring, but the shrubs were not conditioned for the, um, three yes survivabilities. But they have committed that they will replace that shrub. At both sites, there was no erosion sediment, um, beyond the bank observed. There was no algae blooms within the lake and the bank is showing signs of stability. Again, at both, the understory looks to be coming back. Um, it's, it's becoming denser and there's moss on one lot because of, the canopy has actually reestablished itself. Um, so I think overall, both sites are in good condition. The owners have been very cooperative and we'll find out in the spring if those seven trees need to be replaced, but I would expect they do.
Okay.
Chair, comment briefly?
Please.
So I've also read the report and, uh, I want to thank, uh, Gene for all the work she's done following up according to the plan and also conservation. I think they've done a great job of tracking this. Um, overall, the tree survival rate has been very good and there's an excellent plan that Gene commented on to require replacement of those trees that don't survive. So I think it's been a very good plan, carried out very well with good remediation to make sure that it stays on track. So really well done. Thank you, Gene.
Thank you. I think anybody following this, I, I think we'll go a long way to prevent it happening again. Um, it's obviously been a very expensive effort for these homeowners too. And I think it, it really was just an oversight in their part. And like I said, they've been very cooperative.
Yeah, that's great to hear. So thanks to them as well. Certainly was a huge shock when it happened. Thanks.
Yes, that's for sure.
All right. Zero Prescott East Mill Housing.
All right. I just put the application on your agenda only because I know you did comment during the pre-application filing. Um, the application has been filed now. It is before the ZBA. The public hearing opened on November 20th and the ZBA is going through a full peer review process. So they have, um, directed me to solicit proposals for not only stormwater, civil and traffic, but also architectural and landscaping and water and sewer. And so they definitely have, um, some professional support on board and the process will begin, I would expect, um, probably getting first responses from peer reviews in the month of January.
Are, are we going to get to render an opinion on anything in this? And will they listen to us?
Well, you've submitted your comments and all those comments when.
The central issue is the density and I, I mean, you know, that drives everything. And are, are they going to, uh, are they going to push back on the density or, or what?
Who's the they, John?
The, the ZBA.
So I mean, I think, so I will say that there's no, correct me if I'm wrong, Gene, there's no official planning board role in this process. Um, right?
Um, no official, but the ZBA, the ZBA can solicit comments from anybody they deem necessary. And like I said, those comments were submitted and, and they do have those.
So what I would say, John, is that members of the public as well as, uh, board members should, you know, pay attention to the process as it goes through the ZBA. And if there comes a point where an individual wants to submit comments, or, uh, if the board wants to potentially write a letter, um, we can do that. But I think we should let them get through to begin, uh, let, let them do their work, especially with all these peer reviews before we, um, kind of insert any kind of.
I mean, how long is this thing going to take? Because we don't have any position to give them comments after they've approved it.
So by statute, they have 180 days. And I, again, John, I just remind you that the comments that you did submit did have density comments. So we, we talked about floor area ratio for that project versus the Princeton and Avalon and Minco. And so some of that.
My point a little bit is there's, there's not at the high level, but there's nuance associated with it is because remember thinking, well, the projects where we've pushed on the size and we said, take a half floor over here, move it over here, rotate it this way, do this, do that. And they all got to a lower level of, of density, uh, but in a measured way. And well, I, I mean, are the plans exactly what we thought they were going to be? What do they look like? I mean, you know, that's the kind of thing that I was wondering about. I don't know. Maybe we have a full set of plans.
Yes. And they are the same that you did receive during the, the project eligibility review. And they've hired an architect to, to, to look at that. I mean, that certainly one of their concerns is those nearest butters on Prescott Street. There's, there's no denying that. They've expressed that concern and that's been shared with the architect. Um, that being said, it's, it's also a balancing act here because it's a 40B application. Yes, dense, 296 units on six acres, but it also gets us to the 10%. And so we have to weigh, how much can we cut it back and, and go less than that 10%? We're then susceptible for another application for 300. Like, if, if we follow one, one unit less than that number. So it's a little bit of balancing act that I know the chair is aware of, you know, those numbers and, and what play, if any, is in the application.
Yep. So, so Gene, just to clarify the shot clock. So it's 180 days from when they opened the meeting?
I, I'd have to double check that, John. It's either from the application date, which was a month prior. They had to open it within 30 days, I want to say. So I forget if it's the application date or the hearing date.
So, um, I know that this is ZBA and it's not planning board. Um, is, is there any prohibition to the idea that if ZBA were amenable to perhaps have a joint ZBA planning board meeting, not for an official role of planning board, but to have that conversation to address some of the, you know, points that we've raised? It's a lot different when you have a chance to have dialogue and talk it through as opposed to just a letter. Um, and, and if that's not prohibited, is there a way to approach ZBA to say, look, we, we know you have to do your job. We know this is your thing, but if you would find this to be helpful, we've done this joint meeting format with, for example, the select board more than once.
Um, I don't think so because the process is by statute and the statutory process is just before the ZBA. And whenever we've done those joint meetings, it's been something that is on, that we're both dealing with, like the, the select board's going to deal with and the planning board's going to deal with. And because we don't have an actual official role in a 40B by statute, I don't think so.
There's no prohibition for that. I mean, there's statutory responsibility, but there's no prohibition. I mean, we are a land use board.
I know, but I, I don't know. You may want, may want to ask town council. I don't know that. I, I don't, I don't think that it can be done because of the, the 40B process is written out by statute of how it has to be. And it has to be before the zoning board. I don't know that that could include another meeting, but we could ask town council. I, I don't know the answer to that.
But, but we could make a coordinated, like, public comment, right, at a meeting, right?
Well, I think individuals can make a comment in a meeting. And could we make a comment on behalf of the board? Yes. But at the same time, how would we really do that without having had full hearings in front of us, you know? I think the best bet is if someone has an interest in this, which they should, that we should as, you know, kind of this board, that they go to the meetings and can make comments.
I mean, I, I sent a letter to the ZBA on the Mary Mac thing. They ignored it. So if we send them letters, they're, they're just going to ignore it. So that's why it's a lot harder to ignore what you're doing if you're, you're sitting there face-to-face having a conversation.
Right. Well, I'm suggesting going to the ZBA meetings as well is an option. Um, but it's a different board, different chair. I mean, I, I can't say for sure. I just, I, I worry about overstepping when it's, when it's like
Well, then could we.
Prescriptively not our role.
Could we, could we, um, request Gene to pose this question to town council? Is it, is there a prohibition against a joint meeting? And, uh, would the ZBA consider it, um, as long as we're all very clear that we have no statutory responsibilities? This is to provide input, um, which the ZBA is supposed to get. But in this case, it would be input from a board as opposed to an individual.
Um, I, I'd leave it, if the board wants to make a vote to do that, I'm, I'm, I'm really not for it. But I, I mean, I'm only one person. So if the majority of the board wants to ask town council about that, we can. Again, like when we did, you know, amended the family suite bylaw and did the, uh, accessory dwelling, you know, we didn't call in the ZBA, even though that's actually family suite was technically under their, uh, jurisdiction. I, I think we, as a planning board, would be a little surprised to call in the ZBA and, and ask for their opinion on something. I'm not really sure the necessary context. So it's, it might not be apples to apples, but I think they know we're here and, and available. Um, but I, I, I'm hesitant to offer inserting ourselves. But that's just my opinion. If someone wants to do it and make a motion that we, um, ask town council that, then we can do, then someone can do that. We can vote on it. And if the majority wants to, then we do it.
Um, Chair, I share, I share your concerns about, uh, inserting ourselves as a body into, um, a difficult, um, deep process that the, that another body is going through under statutory authority. The fact is, we don't have authority in this case. We could have, but we don't. That's not the way the statute's set up. And for us to weigh in any more than we already have, um, just seems a little, um, inappropriate almost to me. Um, weighing in as individuals, um, in our individual capacity as, as residents of the town is completely different matter. Um, with the expertise of having served on the planning board, but not speaking on behalf of the planning board. With that said, asking town council if we could have a joint meeting is not, you know, doesn't mean we would act on it even if it came back in the affirmative.
I mean, just to play that out, if we were to ask town council, is this prohibited? We, we could frame that question very specifically to say, we're only asking so that we know whether or not it's appropriate for the planning board to offer this to the ZBA if they choose to do it. But it's their choice, not us. We're just saying, if you wanted to have a joint meeting, just to talk about it, um, it's your authority, it's your decision, but we asked town council and FYI, they said that there's no prohibition.
Yeah. I mean, I kind of go back to the town's point is, is that like there's, I mean, I'd feel more comfortable if the ZBA reached out to town council and asked, hey, could the planning board, um, join us on a joint meeting versus us asking town coun, council, could we go into a ZBA meeting?
No, no, I, I was saying specifically not that.
Okay.
Not, not asking town council, can we go into the ZBA? But rather ask town council, is it prohibited for a joint meeting? And town council, the reason we're asking is if ZBA is interested, we would be happy to do that. But we're not going to call the joint meeting because we have no authority here.
That makes sense.
I, I mean, you.
No, I, and I get the subtlety. Yeah.
You make a good point.
Yeah.
We should not do that.
I mean, I think the very least, like table stakes, going back to Kate's point, is is that we could present our concerns as individuals with having perspective from the planning board in a public meeting.
That's right.
Right? And I think that's pretty clean. And I think they probably appreciate that feedback, just as much as having a joint meeting. That's my opinion.
Well, so why don't we just, why don't we just ask the question simpler? Is it prohibited or not? If it's prohibited, then, then we don't even have to get to the next.
Easy answer.
So let's just ask town council if it's prohibited. If it is, then that's the answer. If it's not, then we can have a further discussion about, um, what that would mean.
I appreciate the opportunity to talk it out. Thank you.
But I still would encourage people, um, to, um, talk to the chair of the ZBA and just, you know, individually, he's a, a great guy and very willing to listen and just say, hey, you know, these are some of the things that we've seen over the years. And if you want, we'd be happy to offer any help that we can. Uh, I've had that conversation already, but anyone can certainly have that as an individual. Um, and also to go to the meetings if there's something that, you know, you think you could add, which I know that all of you can.
Well, I'm glad you had the conversation. Do you want to share how it went?
I was basically just, uh, you know, offered, hey, we have an assistant and, uh, you know, if you need any answered questions and just, these are some of the things that we've done, uh, and seen over time. And he basically said, you know, thanks, asked me a couple of questions and just said, you know, we're, we'll get through the, we'll go through the process and then if there's anything that comes up, I'll, you know, reach back out.
Thanks.
Okay. Very good. All right. So we'll, we'll end that discussion item. Uh, can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 4th?
So moved second.
On favor, roll call vote?
Aye.
Uh, hold on. Uh, John?
Yeah. Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
Sean?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. Wow. It's a late one, a later one tonight. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved second.
So motion made by Peter, seconded by Sean. John?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
Sean? Sean?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, everybody, for helping with the remote as well.